Before we start, the City Council just met on one closed session item and there is nothing to report out at this time. Good evening and thank you for viewing the February 21st meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. I'll start with our land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat people. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. If you would like to, please join me for the flag salute. Before the city clerk calls the roll, we do have one absent council member and one joining via, one absent council member that will be joining via Zoom this evening. The current state law Assembly Bill 2449 allows a council member to attend remotely under very narrow circumstances. In short, at least one quorum of legislated body needs to be in person. We have four of us here tonight in a quorum. The member notifies the city of their need to participate remotely for what is called "just cause." Just cause under law is defined narrowly. Contagious illness, caregiving for a family member, traveling for official city business are the most common accepted reasons. Councilmember Schaefer is sick this evening and will be participated in, participating in the meeting remotely under the provisions of this law. Councilmember Schaefer, can you please confirm your attendance is due to illness? And please identify anyone 18 years of age or older in the room with you and your relationship to them.
Yes, illness and there's nobody in the room in age between.
All right, well, good to see you. All right, will the city clerk please call roll?
Mayor Matthews.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Stillman.
Present.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
All present.
Great. If you make to, wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you are logged into Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on. If you're on the phone, press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial star six on your phone. For each item, we will be taking in-person public comment first and then move to online comments. We will not be going back and forth, so if you're wanting to comment, please line up at the podium or raise your electronic hand as soon as public comment is requested for that item. Okay, we are going to start with some ceremonial matters. Number A is proclamation recognizing February 27th, 2024 as Spay Day USA. And we are going to have councilmember White read this.
Well, let's try that again. All right, we are recognizing Spay Day USA, whereas just two unaltered cats and their offspring can make between 10,000 to 40,000 more cats in 10 years, and two unaltered dogs and their offspring can make between 15,000 to 60,000 more dogs in 10 years. And whereas an estimated 6.3 million homeless kittens, puppies, cats, and dogs enter animal shelters in the U.S. every day, a little over half of these animals are adopted. Due to lack of money, space, approximately 1 million are put down, even though many of these animals were healthy, adoptable, and often the offspring of beloved family pets. And whereas animal control programs aimed at coping with the millions of homeless cats and dogs in the United States cost taxpayers billions of dollars annually, preventive spaying and neutering has been shown to drastically reduce pet overpopulation. And whereas veterinarians, humane societies, national and local animal protection organizations, and private residents will join together on Spay Day USA 2024 to spay and neuter tens of thousands of animals and raise funds towards spaying and neutering and even more pets. And whereas ending dog and cat overpopulation is a majority priority of the Companion Animal Foundation, Redwood Pals Rescue, the Sequoia Humane Society, Humboldt County Animal Control, Friends for Life, Humboldt Spay and Neuter Network, and Miranda's Rescue. These local organizations work tirelessly to educate our community about the importance of spaying and neutering pets. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that City Council of the city of Arcata hereby recognizes February 27th, 2024 as Spay Day USA and encourages all community members to end pet overpopulation by having their own animals spayed or neutered and/or sponsoring another cat or dog spaying or neutering through one of our hardworking local organizations dated February 21st, 2024 by our mayor, Meredith Matthews. And I am going to present this to Kim Klaas from Companion Animal Foundation.
...30s that it started to catch on that spaying and neutering was more of an important thing. And back then, we were euthanizing about 70 million animals a year. And even when I got into this work about 23 years ago, really dove into it and founded Companion animal foundation, we were still euthanizing upwards of around 17 million animals a year. I will say that we hit a record low in the year 2022 where we euthanized 378,000 animals, not millions. It is creeping up, so we are seeing a trend lately. You know, post-COVID, it's harder to get appointments, they're more expensive. But regardless, I'm also the director of Sequoia Humane Society. So if you know of anybody, I got a call today about 40 cats. You know, I tell people if there's one cat that shows up and it's pregnant, do not feed it unless you're going to fix it. You know, or just one cat, don't feed it. It's not compassionate to feed without fixing. We have to fix them. And we've got wonderful programs where people can come in and get vouchers. You can refer them to Companion Animal and Sequoia Humane. Right now, we're focusing on females because they're the ones that produce all the litters. And I will say tonight is the closed night. We're doing a Mardi Cause this Saturday night through Sequoia Humane Society. I also know it's a big night for the city of Arcata, for the leadership awards. But anybody out there that doesn't have anything to do Saturday night, tonight's the last night to get tickets, and we're raising funds to further our amazing programs and all the work that we do. So thank you for recognizing this. I appreciate each and every one of you.
Thank you so much. The next will be a proclamation in recognition of human trafficking awareness, and councilmember Stillman will read that.
Okay. Human trafficking awareness. Whereas the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with the inalienable right of freedom and added the 13th amendment to the Constitution making slavery illegal. And whereas slavery within the United States today is most often found in the form of human trafficking and which weakens, which weakens our social fabric, increases violence and organized crime, and debases our humanity. And whereas the victims of human trafficking are typically forced to work in various forms of labor exploitation, including but not limited to commercial sex acts, drug processing, distribution, and other services induced into force, fraud, and coercion. And whereas due to the isolating nature, many individuals locally and across the globe are unaware of that trafficking exists in Humboldt County and its neighboring counties. And whereas it is esteemed that more than 20 million men, women, and children around the world are victims of human trafficking. And whereas California is the state with the highest rate of human trafficking, and whereas indigenous trafficking is at an all-time high, and whereas Seropnemis International of Arcata, serving the Mad River area, are working to abolish human trafficking through education advocacy and collaboration. Now therefore, be proclaimed that the City Council of the city of Arcata hereby calls upon the citizens of Arcata to recognize the vital role that they can play in ending all forms of trafficking and to support the Seropnemis International Clubs of Humboldt County as they raise awareness through the education and other efforts to stop human trafficking. And this is dated February 21st, 2024, signed by Mayor Matthews. And I just want to add one thing. I feel like Seropnemis has done an astounding job in educating all of us in different organizations about trafficking, and it's pretty much appalling to figure out and find out who's being trafficked and what has happened. So I want to thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you. We very much appreciate the City Council bringing out this proclamation and bringing out more awareness for this issue. Seropnemis started here in Arcata in, 70 years ago this year. And I had with me a member who got sick today, so she couldn't come. But she is the daughter of a charter member, and that charter member was Ann Eli, her mother, and that's Mary Ann Iweelu, if you know her. So that's, that was one thing that I really wanted to point out, that we still have a member active in Seropnemis from that charter group. And I'd like to introduce Elaine Reed. Elaine is our district director.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Many of the clubs in my area, which goes from Ukiah to Crescent City, there are 10 Seropnemis clubs, and all of them have presented proclamations to their city councils and to their supervisors as well. So thank you very much for this.
And I wanted to correct the proclamation I turned in. I looked up the information again through our global voice, which is our international organization, Seropnemis, and we are also a member as a non-governmental organization of the United Nations. And the United Nations estimates that 40.3 million people are trafficked globally now, and 71% of those are women. So it's still a big concern and it looks like kind of a growing concern. People of all genders, all groups, all ages, all ethnicities, even all educational backgrounds have been trafficked. And that's hard to take in when you stop and think about that. But it's something that we have to be aware of. I talked to my son, who works in law enforcement, and he said, I asked him about, you know, the academy and everything. He said, they do teach about trafficking in the police academy. And one of the things he mentioned was that when we have large events like the Kinetix Culture Race, it's a prime place for traffickers. So raise your awareness. If you see somebody that seems vulnerable, and those are the people who are trafficked, the people who are vulnerable. Seropnemis works to enable women to become more educated, to become more economically stable, to, as you all women represent, have a place at the table. And so we thank you very much for bringing this to the awareness of the public.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you so much.
Copy. Do you have a copy of the resolution?
All right, it's time for early oral communications. The City Council values your comments. This 15-minute time period allows people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take actions on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action, action will be set for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers are limited to two minutes. There will also be a time for the public to comment specifically on each agenda item and again at the end of the meeting under item number 12. Please make your way to the podium. Raise your hand if you're on Zoom or press star nine if you're calling in by phone to make a comment. We are going to start with the first four in person, and then we'll go to Zoom, and we'll come back to in person if there is, if time allows. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to encourage this council to take up the issue of the ceasefire in Gaza. I think right now more than 12,000 children have been killed, and they literally are not having access to food, medical supplies. Most of the infrastructure has been destroyed. The population is literally starving to death. The children who have to get surgical procedures don't have anesthesia, so they're having to suffer surgical procedures without, without any type of medical procedure or anesthesia. And as a Jewish man, whose father was the president of the Zionist organization in Alexandria, Egypt, I personally feel embarrassed that the state of Israel will be, is currently perpetrating a genocide against an entire population of people. And I feel sick to my stomach about it, you know. I feel embarrassed for the state of Israel. I feel embarrassed for the human species, that there's this deafening silence while a genocide is occurring right now at this very moment on this planet. Have we not grown up as a species to be able to have compassion for children who are starving to death, who don't have medical intervention, who are being killed in huge numbers? I don't really know what more to say about it than that. I just, I have, I have a hard time sleeping thinking about what we are doing on this planet today, and that our taxpayer dollars are going into supporting that, where we could be using that to build hospitals and schools and necessary infrastructure in this country? It's completely shocking and dismaying to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Please hold your applause. Thank you.
Hi, Paul Patino, Arcata. You know, I've been coming here and trying to keep it short so we don't keep you here all night. Ceasefire, no judgment, no bias, nothing else, just a ceasefire without any conditions. It'd be pretty easy to do. Unfortunately, our president of the U.S. is the only one in the world Unfortunately, our president of the U.S. is the only one in the world that won't say yes to a ceasefire resolution. So that just happened. So I think we as citizens of the U.S., city of Arcata, get your name on the list. We want a ceasefire so that he could look at that and say it's a lot of people that want this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary. I do come here often, but I appreciate this opportunity for members of the public, the citizens of Arcata, to have our voice heard and videotaped. And first thing I want to talk about is ceremonial matters. According to the city attorney and the protocols or whatever, we're supposed to have the proclamations made available to the public throughout the year visible. So I would really like for us to figure out a way, and I'm hoping I can work with somebody on that concept, so that we can know how to access some of the proclamations that have been presented through ceremonial matters. And that brings me to the second thing. I just came from Sequoia Conference Center where there was a Human Rights Commission conference on Public Education Forum on Free Speech versus Hate Speech. And I did see the gentleman named Jim, who I forgot his last name, who was here in December receiving a proclamation about Human Rights Week in December, based on the 75th anniversary of the International Declaration for Human Rights. And I told him I was coming here to speak again about a human rights issue. But I also want to share with you two pieces of information that were there and available so that you can have them available to you. And one of them is this wonderful poster, okay? And I'll give those to the city manager. My final thing is, yes, the human rights issue is very important. The human rights tragedy, catastrophe, horror story in a little strip called Gaza needs to be addressed by our little small town of Arcata, with you as the city council recognizing that the people of this community want this on the agenda for discussion.
Thank you.
Hey, I'm Dan Shaheen. I want to talk about two things, fear and love. Our discourse in this country has been driven by fear for a very long time. Most people in both major parties are not voting for a leader they respect, they're voting against a leader they fear. Those leaders have failed us in many ways. The discourse around a ceasefire resolution here has followed a similar pattern, invective, innuendo, and often outright accusations of conspiracy corruption and even terrorism have been thrown around these chambers, and it needs to end. Since the last meeting, I've been made aware of the racial propaganda against Jews that have been circulating in our community. It made me sick. It made me finally understand a lot of the fear that I heard at the last meeting by people conflating ignorant racial talking points about Jews with the incredibly caring people campaigning for a ceasefire in Gaza. It took less than a couple of minutes of low effort investigation to figure out exactly where that hate speech was coming from and who is responsible for it. And it is far from this community. It comes out of Florida. I won't amplify this person's voice by saying his name here, but come to talk to me after this, and I'll tell you all about it. Now for the love part. I've been involved with multiple different authors of ceasefire resolutions, including a radically simplified version I drafted myself and shared with the mayor when I invited her to my home. It was clear within minutes that we shared more in common than we differed on. We talked about our mutual connections to this land and to the conflict zone. We cried and even managed to laugh despite the dark circumstances that brought us together. All of my worry and suspicion about her reasons for silence went away. I've been working with any group that will talk to me, that has any modicum of support for a ceasefire, and I have found them all willing to discuss and even modify the language of their respective resolutions when approached with respect, care, and love. You can only fight hate with love, so I'll again beg this council to put a ceasefire resolution on the agenda that will pass and every peace-loving citizen of Arcata can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to our online comments.
Three or four? That was four. All right, our first one is call-in user. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. My name is Lisa Pelletier. I'm calling in about, I'm calling in to urge you to be more transparent with the people, with the residents of this community, about what's really going on with the general plan in the zoning. On January 3rd, Dave Mizair, a former city council member, made a public comment that he said, what I see happening is whether or not the policies get transferred to other regions of the city are being set up to be the zoning of other areas of the city. And he also said, the plan seems to be to make the city as a whole into high-density residential. And at that point, I guess the mayor must have been shaking her head because he said, I hope you're right, Meredith, but that's the trend that I see. I've looked at the maps, and I see a lot of high-density residential, not even a lot of medium-density residential. And I think it's really important, he said, before zoning changes are made in the neighborhoods, to let the neighborhood speak out about it. Now, at that meeting, city council members, several city council members told us there was nothing to fear and tried to reassure us, but it really felt like, I don't know a polite way to say this, it felt like gaslighting. Because now when we look at the general plan, we see that there are plans to rezone the Bayview, North Town, and Sunset areas, and that with the density bonus, these buildings could be as high as six stories. And if it happened in Dave Mizair's neighborhood, which is I Street, that they were rezoned, and he said that no one had consulted with the neighbors, it can happen in any neighborhood in Arcata. And so I'm calling to just urge you to be more transparent with the people of this community about what's really going on. Right now, the planners and developers have a seat at the table. The neighbors don't have a seat.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Jim. Go ahead, Jim.
Hello, the staff and planning commissioners. I wish to speak on the subject of the planning commission meeting. Information from the agenda packet, that was from February 13th, Judith Mayor to planning commissioners, staff about changes to general plan, update for planning commissioner meeting February 13th, 2024, and stated, I'm requesting that Director Lawrie circulate these planning commissioners prior to the February 13th meeting while we continue to discuss the general plan updates. I sent a larger set of comments and questions to David January 16th, including editorial suggestions. I'm not including here. He returned some notes to me with the suggestion to pitch recommendations and changes and pose subsequent questions to commissioners to address. And Commissioner Mayor, those 10 pages of substantive questions and recommendations were dismissed by the planning commissioner chair through a straw boat of essentially, does anybody want to talk about this? This act showed apathy and disregard for a document that will guide us through the growth of Arcata for the next 20 years to review. Perhaps the council might take a moment to review Commissioner Mayor's suggestions. I wish to address one of her comments, CM 5E, pedestrian pathways, multiple use trails, seven. At least suggestion in general plan, do not retain the current linear feet of the Class 1 trail within the city, even if current facilities must be realigned or relocated to other routes. This language is lifted from the gap and should indicate the city, we should expect more Class 1 trails between 2024 and 2045. What are the limited circumstances in which the city would allow a developer to move a bike trail? Through what means would the city specify how a developer would need to demonstrate removal or relocation of a Class 1 trail sections and would improve, and how it would improve active transportation access or connectivity? And these are important questions she was posing, and they never were discussed.
Thank you so much, Jim. That's your two minutes.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we have no more online public comment. That is six. If you want to take one more from the audience.
All right, I can take one more in person. Thank you.
My name's Laura Fion Shaheen, and I'm here to support the ceasefire in Gaza. And what I want to talk about tonight is how disturbed I was last city council hearing some of the comments, the gist, Palestinian children don't matter, Palestinians is just another word for terrorists, and that Peace and Justice Center and my husband were terrorists. I could not, like, why? Why is this happening? And my children are Palestinian. I am so terrified and upset about the children. They're just dying in Palestine, and I want to do something because they could easily be my children if they had been born in the old country. After the meeting, I came upon an anti-Semitic flyer, and it was horrifying. And then I understood, I understood where the comments, the hate or the fear was coming from. And so I'm standing here today because we are a good community. We are a small community, and we are a liberal community, and I know that we can come together and we can hear one another because I don't want the Jewish community here feeling fearful for their lives and their safety, and I want my children to also not fear for their safety. And I know we can come together. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, that is the end of our early oral communications. Stick around, we'll have a time at the end, and you'll have three minutes. So thank you. All right, so we are moving on to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. Item A is approve the minutes of the city council meeting of February 7th, 2024. B is bi-weekly report on dispersment. C is adopt ordinance number 1567, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata amending the Arcata municipal code to make minor and non-substantive corrections, updates, and clarifications, waive reading of the text, and consent to read by title only. D, approve the purchase of three 2025 Ford Police Interceptors and award contract to Harper Motors in the amount of $173,634.11, including tax, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. E is adopt resolution number 234-33, amending resolution number 156-09, designating one-way streets and alleys. I myself would like to pull item D. Would any of my council members like to pull anything?
Any members of the...
Oh, thank you. Sarah, is there anything you'd like pulled?
You said D, right? Yeah, I'll pull D.
Perfect, thanks.
That's number D. So I would move the approval of consent calendar A, B, C, and E.
I second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Stillman, and a second by Councilmember Wright. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
And Sarah, thank you. I'm sorry. Okay, so these interceptors are not hybrid. Is that correct?
Great, so good evening, council. This agenda item comes to you from Environmental Services as our central garage manages our extensive fleet. Over the last two and a half years, our mechanics and staff have been researching both hybrid and electric interceptor patrol vehicles. And your council approved in September of 2022 the purchase of an electric interceptor. We were hoping that at that time, that could be our start to shifting of alternative fuel vehicles for APD's, you know, emergency and patrol fleet. We received that production of that one electric interceptor was delayed a number of times, and then this fiscal year, we received the announcement that Ford did not have the batteries and the availability to make our car, so it was canceled. We had hoped that hybrid quotes would be available from Ford and had been waiting for that, and in February was when they were releasing what they would have available. And the hybrid and electric vehicles are still not going to be available for quite some time. We know that, you know, the city has a green fleet policy to prioritize purchase of fuel efficiency, you know, and alternative fuels. And we have, you know, done as much of the research as we can around that availability and recognize that it has been a number of years since APD has had new patrol vehicles. As they're heading towards getting fully staffed, in the APD's current patrol fleet, they're really up to having two patrol officers in one car at one time. And our police chief had noted today that at fully staffed, they would likely need to have three staff for vehicles, which is less efficient for operations and having people where they need to be. So due to the imperative need for both replacement of fleet vehicles that take a lot of effort to maintain as they age, and in ensuring continued public safety operations, we sought quotes for gas-powered patrol vehicles for this purchase.
So did you look, I mean, do they have to be Fords?
Great, yeah, great question. And in a conversation, you know, continuing with our police chief, he has talked about that they had researched previous smaller vehicles, looking at the Ford Taurus in past years. They were concerned of the size of the backseat and size of the interior being less safe for officers in detaining people when needed in the backseat. He also shared that some other local departments have been looking into the Chevy Tahoe, that's an even larger vehicle, really have been trying to have vehicles made in the U.S. So there's other options, but I would say there hasn't been a lot of other great options that meet APD's needs currently, you know, and Environmental Services will be, you know, committed to continue those conversations with APD.
Councilmember Schaefer, I'll let you ask a couple of questions, and I'll come back.
You mostly asked my question, but I mean, I was just going to add to, I know that before we had approved the purchase of the electric one, that didn't happen, but I mean, where is the need for three new vehicles coming from as well? Is that just because of increased staffing numbers, or what's the need for that many vehicles right now?
Yeah, all of our vehicles are on a sort of schedule for maintenance and planning for replacement and retirement, when the amount of inputs for operations sort of outweigh keeping an older vehicle on the road and the amount of effort it takes to maintain. So part of that three number is APD has not received new patrol vehicles in, I think, three or four fiscal years. And so those are all of the patrol vehicles in operation are aging, and several have taken a lot longer vacations in central garage due to the repair needs. So the main, it is really needed to ensure that continuity of service, as well as just our police chief's concern of not having enough vehicles for staffing needs.
I just wanted to add to that, Councilmember Schaefer, that this doesn't add to what the original fleet in the police department was, as we had decline in police staff, as vehicles had, you know, basically just died and had to be removed from the fleet when we were in decline staffing. We didn't replace all of those vehicles. So I think they're still going to be two vehicles short from what their fleet was probably 10 years ago.
Great, thank you. No more questions.
I don't know, but I just was sitting with you today, and I think we were looking at, is there a Dodge that's comparable? So are there any other dealerships, I mean, any other makes or models that you've looked at that are maybe not Fords or Chevys?
Yeah, we have not delved into, in this fiscal year, researching other APD vehicle options, and we certainly could do that further with APD. It is a challenge for all, you know, municipalities across the state for procuring battery-powered vehicles. Fortunately, our Ford Lightning F-150 that we ordered two years ago has... Fortunately, we, um, our Ford Lightning F-150 that we ordered two years ago has arrived and that will be, um, you know, joining our Parks fleet. You know, recently fortunately purchased, um, a Toyota Prius, um, a battery-powered vehicle that is now, um, part of our, um, kind of main pool cars. And so I think that could be further research that we could do if the, if the council chooses, um, to do so. And also that it is, it's been increasingly difficult to get our alternative fuel vehicles that we need on the, on the schedule that we hope for.
All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
Thank you. You said sometime down the road. Do you have like a tentative date when they might be available?
Um, Ford, both from individual dealers, local dealers, dealers in the region, and, um, through our cooperative purchasing contracts, knowing that Ford has a estimated, um, date for when quotes would be available for interceptors.
And then also, I know we're replacing three, but not knowing when that date could be, could we purchase maybe one of three or two of the three with the hope of bringing on, um, one of the other electric hybrids? And then my other question was, there were some safety concerns with the particular model of, yes, with like the line of sight, the side, um, the size of it could, um, be a safety concern for pedestrians, bicyclists, and other alternative modalities and? Yes?
Yeah, so the council, um, could choose of any number of, um, patrol vehicles to purchase, you know, tonight. And the, for, you know, safety concerns of SUVs, that has certainly been a safety concern, you know, across, across the country. As I, you know, had mentioned previously, APD, um, had in the past done some research into smaller vehicles, the, the Taurus, and determined that, um, that was not going to work for them operationally. And we could certainly do more, um, have more discussions with APD if that is the, um, direction the council would like us to move in.
Councilmember Schaefer, do you have any other questions? Nope.
So I just wanted to bring up the fact that, um, I'm gonna say it's just not perfect. But if it was perfect, we'd have the kind of cars that we need. But if you, when you're riding with, uh, the officers and you ask them how they feel about the fleet and how they feel about the car you're in currently, they said they really need replacements, that their vehicles are getting really worn and they worry about it. So I would think that we would want to make sure that our police department is well taken care of. And I did read the comments that you just mentioned, uh, from the fellow that talked about line of sight, running over children because, or bicyclists, because you would have a, an area that you couldn't see that you just mentioned. But I, I think that, um, you have to be vigilant, no matter when you're driving, not to run over anyone, except curbs, which I have a tendency to run over. But I would, I would support this and I think we need to move forward and we need to take good care of our officers and provide correct equipment at this time. It's not to say we won't have electric in the future.
I was interested in possibly, um, doing a little bit more research. I know that the time is of essence. How long would it take to maybe just look at, as suggested by Mayor Matthews, um, at other options?
I think our, you know, we can work with the APD over the next, you know, couple of weeks if you, if you give us that direction to do that research. It might be unknown if we're able to get quotes during that time from other manufacturers. Um, just since, you know, we, uh, it's taken about eight months to be able to get these quotes, um, due to limited availability, but we can certainly do that research in a couple of weeks.
Let's open it up for public comment and then we can come back. Thanks for being so patient. Go ahead.
I've been to the Eureka City Council meeting months ago where, um, their fleet was explained and their, um, interest in trying to go electric was also discussed. And the police chief spoke up at that point to explain, or one of the police officers, I can't remember who it was exactly, to explain, um, why it's difficult for them to transition to all-electric for various reasons. One of my hopes is that we can not just independently as a city go to, uh, car, car manufacturers or whatever for these needs, but also, um, find out what the greater California police law enforcement people are doing, maybe through the police association or whatever. So that's one, um, hope. And again, I'm not questioning the police department's activities, but I also would like to be curious about the use of these vehicles because I see a lot of patrolling of like places like around the plaza in the vehicle, wondering why it can't be maybe, um, different with, uh, foot patrol. You park the car and you do some foot patrol. Because greenhouse gas emissions is something that we're trying to reduce, but I don't want to reduce the safety of our community. But I'm just, um, asking curiously about the, um, method of patrolling in the vehicles and if we can maybe, you know, mix it up a little bit so that maybe there's not so much just all-car patrolling around places like the Plaza or perhaps Valley West or wherever their normal patrols are. Because I just, I rarely see people, uh, the police force out in person unless they're arresting somebody or something. And I see them in their cars all the time. So it's not a, it's not a criticism, it's just an observation. And so we need to be aware in terms of the climate and the need to transition at some point to a better vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you. Environmental Director Stinkorn, do you wanna, can you speak to at all the methods that you guys go through? I'm sure that you've talked to other police departments in California to, to see what they're doing.
I know that our police chief would be, you know, better suited to answer that question. I have not done that contact with other police departments and, but that's certainly what we can, we could come back and give you more of that, um, information.
I can add just a little bit, when we looked at these vehicles and moving just into the hybrid interceptors four, five years ago, um, I mean, it wasn't a lottery, but the, the state bid prices for those, we are all going through the same dealers, uh, and it was just whoever got their paperwork in first. And we were all competing for the few vehicles that were out there, especially when we were trying to move towards electric and hybrid. This has been a really competitive environment even prior to COVID. And unfortunately, it just has not broken free to produce the cars that are of interest to police departments throughout the state.
All right, thank you. Uh, we do have a couple of online public comments if you want to take?
Oh, perfect, thank you.
Okay. First one is Karina. Go ahead, Karina.
Hi, um, I was glad to hear that the APD is coming back up to staff. Uh, would really like to see them reinstate their very successful bicycle patrols. That's it.
Thanks, Karina.
All right, the next one, uh, is PC. Go ahead, PC. Go ahead.
Yeah, hi, this is Patricia. Uh, yeah, I was slightly disappointed that, um, we're not looking into an electric or hybrid a little bit more. I totally understand the availability, um, issue with the Ford interceptors. Um, I know from talking with other officers in the past or that, um, there is a visibility, can, they have had visibility concerns with the Ford interceptors. So, um, I would like to see, like, a little bit more research and for, further discussion, um, with the APD on, on different, different types of vehicles. And I totally love that Karina called in and, um, asked for the bike patrols to be reinstated. That was one of my, um, that was one of the, my, uh, my suggestions as well and, um, also with walking patrols, um, once we get our force back up to, um, a decent number. And, um, so, and then if we do bring, uh, a, a vehicle in, uh, make sure it has, um, holders for those ticket books and the radar guns because, um, it'd be really nice to see people, um, it, the little bit more enforcement on speeding that we've seen in the past since we've been so understaffed with our police force. So, anyways, thank you so much.
Thanks, Patricia. Is there anybody else on soon?
No more public comment.
All right, I'm gonna bring it back to the council.
Well, my, I would ask, that, I think that, um, that we actually need to get some new police vehicles and I think we need to be in our replacement program. And if, it takes eight months, so we could go out and you could do your research for a couple of weeks and come back and then you'd have to start the process and hopefully within eight weeks. I think you, I said eight months, but I think it was eight weeks. Or was it, what was it?
Well, um, I mean, research could happen in the next couple of weeks, but as far as securing quotes from different vendors, that may take a while. Since for many of our current vendors and availability, it has taken, you know, from the start of this past fiscal year till now, you know, seven, eight months.
Eight months, that's quite a long time. So if you're all willing to do that and not get any new vehicles and just wait, you know, maybe it'll be another close, not quite a year, but maybe 11 months from now.
I'd like to hear what Councilmember Atkins Alizar has to say.
Um, I'm wondering how you would all feel about supporting the motion as is, but then adding to it that, um, you know, we could add that they continue to seek out more energy-efficient vehicles and also to invite the police chief in just to further discuss this with us?
Could I ask for clarification? So if we support the, the motion as is, does that not, they're gonna buy them, right? That's what's gonna happen. I personally wouldn't mind investing a couple of weeks. It might find that it's futile and we're gonna go with this as the best deal, but that we should look into an option, a couple of weeks isn't gonna make or break us. And, so, yeah, that's what I'd like to just.
Emily, how long are these quotes good for?
It depends, but sometimes, you know, between a month and kind of four months. But typically, we get a quote and we bring it to the council because we, um, want to secure that price and that, um, you know, as soon, as soon as we can.
I'd feel comfortable taking a little pause of a couple of weeks and then bringing it back just to do just a little bit more research and maybe talk to the chief.
I second that.
I didn't make that motion.
Oh, okay. I concur. Okay, I'll make a motion that we would do some further research and bring it back to us in a couple of weeks. And as it may turn out, oh, like, never mind, that's not a part of the motion. So there's my motion.
I, I think.
I, can I, can I, can I, uh, because I think, can I ask a clarification question? Because in my mind, it sounds like the amount of time we do end up going with another option after putting out new bids is still gonna take months and months and months upward to eight months. And as, uh, I think either Emily or city manager said, that we're gonna, you know, we're kind of on a cycle of needing to replace these anyway. And so I think that we could kind of, as Stacy was saying, do both, approve this motion as is, but also begin this process for engagement, working with the chief and talking about what we want to see in the future as far as phasing in, you know, battery-powered hybrid for our fleet. But also it sounds like it is just largely an issue of supply chain too and that these vehicles are just simply not available. And, you know, then we'll be back in the same position, buying gas vehicles just because of the lack of availability. So I would, I would support, uh, your, your motion, Stacy.
All right, so just to challenge the mayor and chairing this meeting, I'm going to, um, I'm going to also make a motion to move forward with D as is, but to add to it to continue to seek, um, more energy-efficient vehicles and also to bring the chief in to, um, discuss this with us at the next meeting if he's available.
Second.
Okay, so I think we have a motion by Councilmember Atkins Alizar and a second by Councilmember Stillman. All else in favor?
Wait, hold on. Which motion are you taking up? You take the second motion first?
The second motion first, this is Stacy's motion. Second.
Aye.
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 Nay.
I think it's the best we can do at this point if there's nothing available.
Well, it does, if you have to wait another eight months or a year, we can, you know.
We have been waiting, we have really tried. We have been waiting on Ford for a long time to come out with these. Um, and we will continue to work hard to convert that fleet to electric.
And that's our goal. Our goal is to have a green fleet and we've had that goal for quite a long time.
And I'd definitely like to talk about the bike cop again too, because I like that. All right, let's get into old business. So we are considering parking standards as outlined in the general plan update. Can we have a, say, a staff report from Community Development Director David Loyah?
Yeah, good evening, mayor and council members. Tonight, uh, we are covering one of the last topics that was identified in January as topics that the city council wanted to cover about the general plan updates, uh, before moving into, uh, approval hearings. And so the, the main topic for tonight is parking. I do want to draw attention before I, um, you know, lose track of it that there, uh, is also an attachment to your staff report that's been tracking the amendments that have been proposed by staff, some that have been proposed by, I'm sorry, rather, by the public, some that have been proposed by the, um, planning commission. And so that is also available for you to consider if you wish to. I'm not gonna spend any additional time on that, but if you wanted to go through those and start making decisions, you may. The planning commission has been looking at the exact same spreadsheet and making, uh, decisions on those to forward to you. So for tonight, uh, the topic is parking. And again, this is addressing general plans citywide, uh, the, uh, parking policies that are incorporated into various sections. And at the, underlying all of this parking policy, uh, is really related to the smart growth policies that the city of Arcata's both adopted in, it's a, uh, general plan 2020 that adopted in 1999. And, uh, the policies that it's been really trying to emphasize in the current update to the general plan. Uh, the idea there is that the smart growth policies are gonna help to reduce greenhouse gases and that reducing those greenhouse gases means adopting new alternative transportation, uh, policies and investing in that infrastructure, uh, sometimes at the, uh, expense to balance infrastructure that we've already, uh, invested in for, for passenger vehicles. Um, and that that again, in turn, translates into higher-density developments. Those things are necessary, uh, to work together to get the economies of scale to, uh, to make that vision of smart growth come true. So what the, what I've tried to do with the staff report is to identify all of the policies, starting on packet page 59, that I've, you know, pull out quickly that show, uh, what the emphasis is for parking within the city of Arcata. And a lot of these policies are really, uh, double down, if you will, on the, uh, sort of proactive policies that we had historically. I list several of those, but I wanted to highlight just one of them where, uh, in the downtown, we've had a reduction in parking, uh, to developments that have residential, uh, component to them. Uh, they're only triggering parking once you get above six units. And once you get above that six units, the standards say that you only need to provide one-third the number of parking spaces that there are units. We haven't had a whole lot of projects that have crossed that threshold. Um, the one that I point to is Sorrel Place, um, and that project seems to be working out fairly well. That was also an important project because we implemented some of the, uh, other transportation policies that came out of conversations early on in the, in, uh, this planning process, including offering bus passes to the residents, uh, that live there. And while we haven't operationalized it yet, I'm pretty excited about the opportunity to have a project-based car share. So they'd have kind of a zip car that's available to the people who live in that project. And so these are the kinds of ancillary policies that go along with a reduction in parking that helps to balance the need that those residents will have for, uh, for having access to transportation up to and including, uh, individual passenger vehicles. So, you know, with, with that setup, I just wanted to, uh, turn it over. If you have any questions about the, the policies, uh, that I've listed here or any other policies that you're curious about related to parking or other topics that are related in the general plan. And just to emphasize that, the intent here is not to eliminate the ability for projects to have parking. The intent here is to remove the requirement, the government requirement, the city's requirement that you have parking, uh, that, um, is potentially unnecessary. We have several examples of projects that have been built with these high parking standards where the parking lots sit vacant for most of the time. So with that, um, I'll turn it back over to the city council and answer any questions you may have. And I'm sure there are folks out in the public that want to have, uh, comment on this as well.
I was just going to mention that we used to have parking requirements in our downtown and they have been eliminated. But at one time on the corner of Ninth and H Streets, after there was a fire there in 1979, it couldn't be built on for almost 20 years. after there was a fire there in 1979, it couldn't be built on for almost 20 years because the parking requirements for 43 parking spaces in order to build on that project. And so we had development standards that really precluded things happening. And so that probably took about, I'd say about four or five years to be able to change that around so we could have in the downtown, if we had that kind of an incident, we wouldn't have to provide parking of that nature. So that's where that came about.
I just had a really quick question about Sorrel Place. I remember when I was on the planning commission that that came through and I was really excited about free bus passes for the residents, the possibility of the zipcar. Unfortunately, it hasn't been implemented, but it will soon. It'd be great to have some information, statistics, data on how that worked out. But my question is, you said it's working, seems to be working pretty well right now. And I'm wondering, and I don't know, if because it's affordable housing, that socioeconomics might have a play in it, that maybe these folks, as opposed to, say, another housing development, might not be able to afford vehicles. And so that could be one of the reasons why it's working, if it is. I'm just wondering if that comes into play.
Yeah, I only have, you know, anecdotal information about that, and so, you know, take it with a grain of salt. Certainly, the income targeting on that project, you know, is really deep targeting. The intent is to find households that are earning up to, you know, as low as 30% average median income. And so, you know, I do think that the, one of the really important, you know, features of that project is that those individuals, you know, can, can live in that project and not have to have a car because there are other, you know, you know, they're shopping nearby, there, there are jobs nearby. The project provides bus passes so they can use those bus passes to get on our buses. And so I think it, it stands to reason that, that, you know, at least some of those households do not have cars. But I, I think it also stands to reason that there may be people who, given the opportunity to live in a situation where they didn't have to have a car, that they would also choose that as well. Purchasing, maintaining, you know, feeding a vehicle, finding, you know, places for it to, to stay, those are also very expensive and reducing that from households' cost, especially if there's, you know, alternative transportation modes provided for that household or, or for that business, you know, like our bus pass program or the car share program, having a place to park your expensive bicycle indoors, you know, those, those kinds of trade-offs, I think, are reasonable to assume that the, the private market will accept as well.
I know that I've had, needed to do business in that area and didn't have an issue finding a parking spot and was very near Sorrel Place, that's good. Do we have any anecdotal evidence even about like how well that bus program might be working? Like, is there a way to track it, like the certain bus passes coming from Sorrel Place? And, you know, it's like 80% of them that have been given out have been used or whatever that might look like?
Good evening, council. Yes, we could track that. So every year, they purchase bus passes through HTA and they have an electronic code in the passes, so we should be able to get that information. I made a note of that, so I will get that information and I'll see how, how are the stats on those, on that, on that bus program.
Not a question, but I just wanted to bring up, and I think Director Loyah was kind of heading towards this, but I think an important part of, of the plan of reducing the parking is to, it's also laid out in our policies, but to invest in alternative modes. And so as long as, and I think that's where, where the public gets nervous, and so as long as we are investing in those alternative modes and helping to, you know, beef up what we, what we currently have and make it more usable, I think that's the, the key to making the parking, you know, minimums and maximums successful.
Councilmember Schaefer, do you have any comments or questions?
My only comment here, I mean, would just be, and I think it helps ease the mind of, of folks that, that have anxiety about there not being enough parking in the future here, but to just have a more detailed parking study done for our community. And, you know, I'm happy with all these policies, I know, and, you know, that these are the way we want to be moving and I, I support this overhaul and, and I know it will help development and, you know, as Stacy was saying, really make us put investment into our other active transportation and our trail network and everything like that. But it would be great to see a more updated parking study done, just so we can kind of know what we're working with. And also, you know, I know we've floated some ideas of looking at different types of paid parking and all that, so that would be my only suggestion.
That's a great suggestion. Councilwoman Schaefer, any other comments? Can I take it out to public comment?
Just a quick comment, that my car died. It's an older Prius hybrid, and so I've been having to rely on alternative ways to get places, rides from fellow council members, thank you. And, but what I've noticed is that it has been a challenge, so I'm really looking forward to be beefing up our bus system and stuff because it wasn't getting me to where I needed to go at the time I needed to be there. I was going to have to walk like 12 blocks with a fused ankle. So, yeah, it's still, we need more work, we'll get there.
All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment and then we'll come back, okay? About this agenda item.
I just want to point out that for many people, a car is what can help expand their radius of ability to search for a job, to be able to get to a job faster, and it can be an economic benefit for many, especially poor people. And so to limit those with lower income and to limit their ability to possess an automobile and to share in that, that so many other people in this community have and rely on, might not be appreciated by everyone. That's all.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. The parking reforms that are included in the draft general plan update are really designed to correct older policies and begin to lower housing costs and also reduce the automobile dependency with all of the related safety and environmental impacts that come with it. You've heard from us, I think, a lot about why these kinds of parking reforms are important. I'll just say again, forcing builders to provide excessive parking makes a lot of projects totally infeasible, as you've heard earlier, and when projects are built, it increases the costs, makes housing significantly more expensive. Parking lots also take up huge amounts of space, often more space than the buildings they're supposed to serve, which prevents the kind of development that really supports walking, biking, and transit use. And once that parking is built, it provides a strong incentive for car ownership and for driving at a time when climate science says that we need to be dramatically reducing the amount of driving we're doing. So that's the world, you know, we're living in now. This analysis from CRTP recently shows that 26% of developable land in downtown Arcata is covered by parking lots currently, and the general plan parking reforms that are proposed would slowly, gradually transition Arcata toward a more healthy and sustainable, more people-focused, rather than car-centric community. I also want to bring to your attention that it's not really, it's not just me, it's not just CRTP saying these things. There was a recent analysis by the Victoria Transport Policy Institute that found parking reforms like these can reduce the cost of housing by 10 to 20%, which is pretty significant. Responding to data like that, the National Parking Reform Network has tallied hundreds of communities nationwide that have removed some or all of their parking requirements, and that number is growing fast. It's really a significant trend. I would say one of the U.S. leaders in implementing this kind of policy and just infill land use policy generally has been the city of Minneapolis. They started doing it several years ago, and recently, the city's planning director said that in terms of stimulating new housing production, quote, "The elimination of parking minimums has been the most effective regulatory reform we've made." Also wanted to point out that there's a recent analysis from the Rocky Mountain Institute that found that land use reforms, including these types of parking reforms, have the potential to reduce climate pollution as much as the transition to electric vehicles. So for safety, for affordability, for the climate, for health, for all these reasons, we just ask that you support the parking reforms that are proposed in the general plan update and ensure that all the documents are consistent on these crucial policies. Thank you.
Thanks, Colin.
Okay. Good evening, council. I want to make a few points. I've got an eight-page handout there that you can read afterwards, but I'll be going through it pretty much in order that the printout is there. The, I want to make the point that there's a huge difference between reducing a minimum and reducing a maximum. When you reduce a minimum, let's say if the minimum becomes zero, that allows, a developer can choose what he or she wants, what the developer wants. If you have enforced a maximum, then you're telling the developer what the maximum is. The, it's, they can't be lumped in the same category. So the, doing, reducing the minimum is something I think we can all be in favor of. Reducing the maximum essentially is social engineering. You're telling the developer what the developer can do or not do. As an example, and this is probably the worst example, in the current gateway code, the maximum for commercial development is one parking place per thousand square feet. A developer wants to build a restaurant perhaps in the ground floor of a building, it's a thousand square feet, that restaurant could have 35 patrons, five or six staff. The maximum parking that's allowed is one. So it brings up the question of, is the developer going to build that commercial property or is anyone going to rent it? This came up, the planning commission had an urban field studio, they did an analysis of four proposed buildings in the gateway area, and they said that the buildings may not be feasible because lenders wouldn't lend on them because the chance of tenants not wanting to rent the buildings with low parking would cause the lenders to not see it as a good investment. The, another question is, how does the business community see this? The Economic Development Committee had some words. They said, "Must ensure that sufficient parking provided for both residents and visitors too and employees of local businesses, given the rural nature of this area, and to ensure that parking doesn't infringe on nearby residential neighborhoods." This was eliminated. This was the part of their suggestion, this was eliminated. In terms of Sorrel Place, I feel it's not a good example. The area around them is pretty empty. It also, there's another aspect that people work on their cars in the street and there's more oil that goes into the creek from parking at Sorrel Place. I also say that reduction in parking maximum is ageist and discriminatory. Thanks, please read it and go to arcata1.com.
Thank you, Fred.
Good evening. I, I support in trying to get people into public transportation, I'm totally in favor of that, but I'm also realistic and probably the only one in here that's lived in mid-rises in cities that, you know, have a lot of folks in these neighborhoods. And the reality is, it doesn't matter whether it's an elderly person or a mother with young kids, you know, they want, they want parking in their building. They want, they don't want to have to drive around a block or two with their groceries in, in the rain and bring them back to the building, you know, they want to, they want to park in their building and, and use a cart and get it to their, their apartment building. So you're, you're like living in your own little world here as far as, I mean, it's, it's a great goal, but it's, it's not realistic of what, what people want. And so it's just an easy way of, of getting out of like not addressing, you know, how, how people are going to get around. I mean, I think we've gone through some extremes, like what Alex said and the problem that she had, that's, that's, that's crazy too, but I think swinging back and not having any responsibility for parking is, is, is not going to work. And I would also say that, take a look at what's happening just right now. I mean, you put a lot of money into the Eighth and Ninth Street improvement projects to try to get people to go to the Creamery. You get over to the Creamery and there's not even a sidewalk over there by the Arcata Playhouse, so all the cars park head-on there and, you know, at any time, somebody could back out and, you know, run somebody over because there's not a sidewalk there, just asphalt flowing to asphalt. So I think on your plans, you are going to have a sidewalk there at some point, but then you would lose like 17 parking spots there that are parking head-on at the Playhouse. Put those cars on the street right now without any, any housing being built and you pretty much have, you know, that area starting to max out just from folks going to the business, the pub that's very popular. Take a look at what happened with the things that changed at the co-op with, you know, the parking lot was changed, they lost 20 parking spots. I've noticed as I walk by there every evening, that the bittersweet across the street, you know, they rent out their parking lot and they have no parking for their patrons, so they go around 5 o'clock to the co-op and fill, start filling up the co-op parking. So it's already happening, you're just not seeing it without any, anything building. So it's just Sorrel, Sorrel Place is a bad example because it's just one building, but the minute you start having two, three of these things, then it's a, that's a major issue. So take a look at parking for the campus store, you know, they, they, you got to pay over there, and there's an article in the lumberjack about that, how they're lost $250,000 in one year and nobody wants to park there.
Thank you, Greg. Do we have any, any online comments?
We do. The first one is Jim. Go ahead, Jim.
Hello, good to council and staff. Just a couple, a few quick comments. I do support Councilmember Schaefer's comment, considering potentially a traffic study. It might better, better helped understand if there might be, you know, reconsidering as far as maximums go, you know, best realistically what might be needed. And then also with Councilmember Atkins Salazar's comment, I, I do appreciate where she was talking about like ultimate goals and, you know, it's going to be a give and take, but I think CMSC number eight or 5E number eight, reduce vehicle trips from other parts of the city by creating pedestrian and bicycle-friendly corridors that draw residents and visitors to enter the various neighborhoods via means of other than motorized vehicles, fulfill the potential of the existing and planned Class 1 trails by planning for expanded connections that will draw bikes and peds between friendly, between activity centers. Anyway, I think that speaks a little bit to the, the potential and a little bit of hope of this. I mean, but it is a real problem as far as what's been stated with, you know, seniors and people with disabilities getting around. Hope you strike a balance on that. Thanks.
Thanks, Jim.
All right, our next speaker is a cell phone ending in 3678. Go ahead.
What? Is that you?
Oh, is that Patricia? Do you want to speak on Jim's line or do you want to try to come through on the other one? Go ahead.
Hi, I think I'm unmuted now. Hello?
Yep, we got you.
Thanks. Hi, my name's Jennifer Culp and I'm calling to support getting rid of parking minimums. Parking requirements being eliminated has been the most effective regulatory reform another city has made, according to the planning director who was quoted on National Public Radio just a few days ago in terms of increasing affordability of housing. And, you know, many communities around the country have tried streamlining all kinds of different types of housing, but this person said the elimination of parking requirements has been the most effective regulatory reform. And I think this is just, it's so important to remember that disabled or elderly people, there can be disabled parking or handicap parking in different places. It's not, it's not a complicated thing, but to provide free parking spaces for everyone at the expense of people who actually need housing seems to me, well, I just, I guess I kind of want to say, I don't really feel like it's my privilege to park my car for free on public property everywhere I go. The, getting rid of the parking requirements in downtown Arcata has certainly not caused the big parking crisis that a lot of people predicted it would, and it's, it's very, very difficult to even view Arcata having a parking problem, so I strongly support that and thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you, Jen.
All right, there's no more online public comment.
All right, I will bring it back to the council. I just, we'll say that, you know, this is our 20-year plan, this is a goal. You know, we're not going to tomorrow wake up and there's going to be buildings all over the place and no parking. This is something that we're working towards at the same time as working on our public transportation infrastructure and other ways... and other ways to get around. So...anybody else?
I just wanted to comment. I appreciate what Jen Culp said about those who qualify for a placard, but just because you're elderly does not qualify you for a placard, and that certainly is going to put a cost and a challenge for families. So, it's like socioeconomics. If you can afford it, then you can park. But what about these families who, you know, have to walk eight blocks, as pointed out by one of our speakers, and you have an infant, maybe you have two toddlers by your side, bags of groceries, it's pouring rain, and it's getting dark, and you have to park eight blocks, ten blocks from your home? And then I think about, you know, safety for all genders, but in particular, I think of young women, you know, walking by themselves at night, trying to get home in the, you know, in the dark because they have to park far away. So, those are some concerns of mine. And yeah, I think there was another one. I was...I did watch that particular Planning Commission meeting that Fred had referred to when Urban Field Studios came, and they had proposed that what they found in their studies that is they were concerned about that lenders would not lend because these buildings might not be occupied because nobody could park their vehicles. So, they might not want to rent or buy, or, you know, that kind of thing. And then I think it was on...let me just make sure. Page 59. Give me just one minute. LU1D. I apologize. I don't have it pulled up. It was...you know, I'll come back to it if I can figure out what it was that I had...was going to comment on.
Thanks, Councilmember Schaefer. Anything else to add?
I do definitely support doing a parking study. I think that's a wonderful addition to this. But what do you need from us tonight, the community?
Yeah. Again, I mean, if we're on the right track, you approve of these policies, and we don't need anything. If we're on the wrong track, it'd be good to know that now.
So, one of the things I was thinking about, because a number of years ago, probably, I don't know, fifteen, we counted...Connie Stewart and I went around, and we made a tally of all the parking lots that are private in Arcata, and how many cars were parked there. Or, I should say, not cars. How many slots were allowed? And it led us, you know, we talked about that. Maybe we need a parking management district and that we could work with all the property owners that happen to have private lots and put that together. The other thing is, there is discussion that possibly we need a parking garage. But I think we don't know for sure what a developer is going to want to do when they come in and decide they want to build in the Gateway or somewhere else in Arcata. They may want to put parking there. They may want to limit parking. Or finally, we may be able to get a Zipcar program here. If we have enough need, we may be able to do that. And if we could get a Zipcar, then we have opportunities for people to get around without having their own vehicle. And I saw a Zipcar not long ago from Eureka...I mean, not Eureka, from San Francisco that was coming through Eureka. So, you can go in long distances with a Zipcar. And I know that our Community Development Director's been trying to work with them, but I think the more we have available, then there'll be an interest in coming forward and having that kind of a vehicle available. So, a parking study, is that for private lots, or is that for public lots? And we know in Arcata, we have very few public lots. So, we think about that. How would that be? And then we should also, if we're going to do that, we may want to think about a parking management district because eventually, if we get into having meters in the downtown for parking, that could all be part of that system. Thank you.
Thanks. No, just in my final thoughts are that I do support this. And just to reiterate what the mayor said, this is...these are changes over time, and this is necessary for our plan. Arcata is not the only city. We are not making this up. This is happening in many other places. It's not unique to Arcata. And so, I think that we just, you know, keep an eye on things. And I support the idea of a study if that's going to, you know, help people feel better. But again, when you're pushing for change, which is what, you know, what we're all doing, there are moments of uncomfortableness. And so, you know, we could be facing that.
And, you know, I just wanted this comment about having to walk eight blocks with children following you down the street. It's pouring rain. We left that out. No rain, you know, the rain, maybe snow that day. But I'm thinking that a lot of these buildings could have access where you can have unloading zones. So, we don't know. We have no idea what people are thinking. But it could be, that would be a possibility, that you have a place that you can unload. So, I would like to support this policy.
I just had one. I did figure out what it was I wanted to say about LU1D, which is on our packet, page 59. It's "Reduce parking maximum in the most walkable areas of the city. Reduce maximum allowed parking within the infill opportunity zones to permit walkable communities and minimize vehicle parking requirements and maximum walk, bike, and transit infrastructure," which I agree with all of that. But what came to mind is that Valley West is one of those infill opportunity zones. And as pointed out, as our very own CRTP Director, who wrote an incredible, informative, front-page story in the Mad River Union about there were many, many challenges in this particular opportunity zone for bikes and pets because it's not safe. You take your life into your own hands if you're on a bicycle or you're walking out there. So, that is what I was just wanting to address, is that, you know, not every infill opportunity zone is going to be a walkable or safe, walkable community.
Well, we don't actually...my opinion is, I don't actually know that would be true because things will change as things move forward. And so...
Hope you're right. I would love to see those improvements.
Also, just to add to Alex's previous point, other countries do this and have been doing it for hundreds and, you know, of years. We're just really reliant on cars here in America. We've designed ourselves into reliance on cars. But, you know, this scene described of towing your kids down the street in the rain with your groceries and all that, that's pretty normal in, you know, anywhere in Europe or South America. So...
But they also have an incredible infrastructure to do that. So, we don't really have to worry about that if you live in Europe. But here, like you pointed out, other countries do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's...
But, you know, this is a 20-year plan, and in 20 years, we don't know exactly what's going to happen. We've been working on Humboldt Transit Authority. They've gotten more and more going on. They're doing a lot of different things. And so, it's going to be easier to get around, and we should let things go and just approve this and know that in...maybe it's only going to be four or five, 10 years, and we will be able to see the difference.
I think that we could just do some tweaks. And I do hear you. I guess, and I'm sure you do ride the bus or have, but I've learned just in this last week or so, just in that short amount of time, I don't have small children in tow, but I had a backpack. I had a laptop. I had things for work. I have a fused ankle, and I couldn't get where I needed to go. So, I ended up having to call a lot of people because public transit simply did not work for me. It doesn't get...I can't get home tonight on the bus if we don't get out at a certain time. I'll be walking to Valley West, which is three and a half miles, which is...most people can't, but I can't because of my leg. And they don't have any buses on Sunday ever at all. So, you're kind of trapped if you live out in Valley West or in these other areas on Old Arcata Road or wherever it is.
Okay. You're going to be okay.
Well, I hope you're right, that those things do change in 20 years. I'd like to see more equity before 20 years, and particularly in some of those areas of opportunity that have been identified. It's opportunity for some, and for others, it's just going to create a whole bunch more challenges.
So, yes, let's continue and really make a priority to invest money in alternative forms of transportation, and then we can be...we can be celebrating the options that we have. So, let's try to move forward in investing in those things that we need to do to make all of this happen.
And there still is parking in Arcata. All right.
Do you need a motion, or are you okay with this? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Does anybody need a break? Are we good? All right. All right. We are going to move on to new business. So, we are going to approve the US 101 and Sunset Avenue Interchange project and direct the staff to file a California Environmental Quality Act document decoloration as a notice of exemption with the Humboldt County Recorders Office for the project. Can we have a staff report from City Engineer Netricotry?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and the members of the public and staff. The item in front of you today is project approval for US 101 and Sunset Avenue Interchange, and CEQA adoption as notice of exemption for the project as presented. Before we take any public comments, input, or we do any action, I just want to give you some background on the project. We've been working on this project for, I would say, at least for more than 10 years. As you know, things take time to happen. So, we have done some progress. So, I just wanted maybe last 10 years. I'm going to just recap quickly in two to three minutes. So, I will just go over like the project, the existing conditions.
Can you hold on one second? Can we get the visuals up on these screens?
It's there. It's there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where are you? Thank you. Thank you.
So, I will just go over the existing conditions, what we plan to do, and how people can provide the comments. So, here, this is the project we are talking about, or the project area. Here you see, here, this is US 101. This is LK Wood. This is Sunset Overpass, and this is G Street and H Street, one of the most confusing intersections that if you ask anybody, they will say one of the most confusing and not very safe intersection in the city of Arcata with longest crosswalk in the world, I would say. The length of the crosswalk here is 215 feet. A person will be exposed to vehicles while walking on that, at least for a minute when they are trying to cross from the bridge to connect to Cal Poly Humboldt. Currently, there are sidewalks, at least on the one side of Sunset, and there is sidewalk on Sunset Avenue. There's sidewalks on LK Wood. And also on Overpass, there's a wider sidewalk. Currently, there are more than eight stop controls at those combined intersections. We call it as a two-intersection, but actually, there are three intersections. This is one intersection with the ramps. This is intersection number two. And with LK Wood, this is intersection number three. So, as a part of the project, I'll explain, we will be combining these three intersections to a two-intersections. So, this will be a...still be a one-intersection, and this we will be combining to a one-intersection. Currently, we do have a transit going through. All the transit buses go through these intersections, all the transit buses, HTA, NCDArcata, or AMRTS. Currently, LK Wood, Sunset Avenue, G and H Street have Class 2 bike lanes on them. Class 2 bike lanes defined by a five-foot width separated from the traveling vehicle. So, there's a five-foot bike lanes on this, in this project area, I would say. Yeah. So...so, what we have done so far in 2000...I'll just go back to 2015. Now, we didn't do much infrastructure improvement. You can see the old landscape here. We just did striping work in 2015 to enhance the area so people can see how the striping is. Before that, the striping was like a paint, but we added thermal, working with Cal Poly Humboldt. At that time, Humboldt State and Caltrans, we were at least were able to enhance the intersection by just by thermal striping. You all remember in 2016, we had...we were aware of multiple projects coming into fruition or in the city. And out of those multiple projects, some have already been completed, some have not, and some will be happening in near future. And some are under construction. As a part of that traffic study, we analyzed multiple intersections, and these three intersections were part of that study. The reason I'm bringing this study is, this is the traffic study where we decided to have a roundabout at this location. During this process of traffic impact study, we've been consulting with Cal Poly Humboldt, Caltrans, NCD staff. What is the appropriate improvement there? Our consultants, who were doing the traffic impact study for the whole project, they asked us what are the desired improvements for those areas. Options were doing nothing, just keeping the stop and enhancing with lighting, sidewalks. Other option was signal, and the third option was roundabout. We have to make some improvements, but we just cannot just do sidewalks and lighting improvements. So, that was eliminated. Signals, we consulted with Cal Poly Humboldt. They are not in signal business. They didn't want to be part of that. Caltrans didn't want to be responsible for signals. And CDF Arcata, we don't own any signals. So, we didn't want it to be part of signals or we have signals in our system. So, idea of signal at that time also was eliminated. So, we end up with roundabout as an option. Before I move forward, just want to be, you know, give one more detail. It's very critical. The project area, as a CDF Arcata, our control is only on G Street and H Street in this area and Sunset Avenue on this area from this side. This part has all Caltrans right-of-way. We are in Caltrans right-of-way. This is owned by Cal Poly Humboldt. So, this is very critical because we have to...it's not our property, but we are working as a partnership with Cal Poly Humboldt and Caltrans to make this project happen. So, that was that. That was that. We worked, and that's how the idea of roundabout was formalized in a traffic impact study. Before that, as a CD team, we have talked about roundabout at that location, but that was just talk and concept. But it was formalized during this traffic impact study. So, we had the plan. We knew we had to do roundabout, and we know it takes time to do project. So, we...and we knew it would be at least more than five to 10 years before we even get the project for roundabout. So, we had to do some improvement in that area. So, over the years, we have done a lot of improvements to that intersection, and we presented these concepts at TSC and at the staff label. We talked about different options. This is one of the options I'm presenting because the intersection is not like this today. The option was, as you know, at LK Wood, currently, the vehicle...this is only for vehicle. We did at that time think about not letting the vehicle go through and make the vehicle turn, go straight, and make that left, right turn here. But it was not well-accepted by a lot of people at that time. So, we ended up eliminating that, and we ended up doing this one. So, this is how the intersection is today. There are concrete islands here. It was initially proposed, but because of the cost, they were eliminated. The only concrete island that got built as a part of that project was this one. And this were just thermal stripes, thermal stripes, thermal stripes. This was also one of the concept, but it was expensive because of the retaining wall required for the sidewalks. So, it was also eliminated. So, what I'm trying to say, like, we've been looking at the intersection for a long time. We did some small improvements. And this is the most recent improvement that you saw. I mean, like, in four or five years ago, we did a left-hand pocket on LK Wood because vehicles were queuing here during the morning peak and evening peak. So, that reduced some stress because of the left-hand pocket. At the same time, we worked with Caltrans, and we were able to install plastic paddles here, here. They are hard-plastic paddles. Before that, we tried temporary paddles, but they were gone like in like a week. So, we came up with this option, and we agreed with Caltrans on this one to, "We will purchase and they will maintain." Or maybe it was vice versa. They purchased it, and we are maintaining it. And to date, we have not maintained a single one. It's been more than six years they've been installed, and we didn't have to maintain. I know they are not the perfect barrier or stopper for a vehicle, but at least it helps people at nighttime and also the daytime as a physical barrier. So, as I said, we knew we were going to do roundabout, and we know it's going to take a lot of money to do that. So, we had to do something. So, we know from the past experience, to get funding or grants, we have to start with a project study report. So, in 2019 and 20, we worked on a project study report, completed the project study report in 2021, submitted to HCOG and Caltrans, and we were able to secure some funding for the initial phase of the project. So, through STIP funding, we were able to get half a million dollars to do the next phase of the project, what we call project approval and environmental document phase. That was only for the east intersection initially, That was only for the east intersection initially, and west intersection was not included. But since we were going to do a study, we decided we need to include both the intersection so we can do a complete study of the area. It needed more money, so we reached out to Caltrans and Cal Poly Humboldt. We got response from both of them. Caltrans said, we will not be able to, able to help you financially, however, we can commit to the project and we will work with you and we will give you staff time. Cal Poly responded, as we are committed towards the project, we need to do some improvements, so we will pitch some money towards the initial phase of the project. So they pitched $75,000 for the initial P and E D phase of the project, so, and we are moving forward with that. We, through an RFP process, we hired GHD to help us with P and E D phase, P and E D phase in 2022, and since that, we've been working on, last two years, we've been working on that. We have completed all the studies required by Caltrans, and then for CEQA determination, today we have, I'm not going to read all the list, but we have completed all the studies needed to do the environmental document. Caltrans is content, they have not completed their NEPA portion, but they have all the documents that they need to complete that. And we have completed our CEQA portion because we, as a city, we are the lead on that. So that's done, and then, okay, next one. So what is the project? Here, this just gives you the concept. Earlier, I said we have a Class II bike lanes in the project area, but as a part of the project, as you know, we finished our Bay Trail project, and it terminates at the intersection of Foster and Sunset, it terminates here. We plan to build any any metal rail project, hopefully construction next year, which will start here, it will continue all along here, along the railroad corridor. The goal of this project is to connect that Class I shared path from here all the way along Sunset through the overpass, the red line here, and it will connect here. So as a part of the project, we will be adding a Class I path to the project. And then I'll give you, give you more details about the project as I go here. So I will start with the roundabout on the west side. As you can see here, in this configuration, we have two lanes for the US 101 ramps coming to the roundabout or coming to City of Arcata. One is, this is similar to dedicated right turn here, so they don't have to go through the roundabout, they can just make a right turn here smoothly. They have to definitely yield, but they will go through here. Similarly, you will see there is a dedicated lane, or you want to call it a slip lane, which goes here. The reason for these two extra lanes here on this side and this side is the volume of traffic that comes from US 101 here and from Sunset for the downtown area, and then for the Cal Poly Humboldt. Because of that, because to have efficient operation, we need to have those lanes, this one and this one. As I said earlier, as a part of the project, we are adding a 10-foot wide Class I shared path, which will be connecting to our existing Class I path along here, crossing here, crossing this way, coming here, crossing and connecting to Cal Poly Humboldt as a part of the project. And as I said earlier, we had the longest crosswalk, so idea was to have the shortest crosswalk on the proposed project. So you will see all these crosswalks here are the shortest crosswalk. They will have rapid flashing beacons at each crosswalk, and each crosswalk will have a street light on top of it. As with any roundabouts, you will, or we will have yield signs at the entrance of each. This roundabout is designed for all legal California vehicles, for the trucks, transit, we have run the turning templates, and they work for them. Similarly, I will not go in detail on this, it's the same concept, same idea, Class I trail, shortest crosswalks. This is, you know, our designers and our city team was inspired by livable communities, so we are trying to create a public space here in this corner, and Cal Poly Humboldt is also in support of this idea of having a community space or a public space here, so we, this is just a landscape feature shown right now, but that's the idea behind it. So that's just the project description, let me see what else I have, so yeah. So as I said earlier, we, we will be finishing our, our P and E D phase or project approval and environmental document phase by May of this year, that's our goal. We had one public meeting in November, we did receive comments, we are trying to incorporate them in our 30% design. The goal for completing our 30% design is in next one month. Layout is not going to change, we're just refining the details on the design work. Our goal was in 2023 to seek funding for the final design, because we are right now just in the preliminary design, so we need funding for the final design. So in 2023, we were able to secure $1.5 million for design, so we have money to do the design for the project currently. The goal is to finish the final design in, by 2025 and seek construction funding this year and next year. So currently, we are working on a grant application for, to seek construction funding. As I said earlier, this is one of the best example of partnership between, partnership project between Cal Poly Humboldt, Caltrans, and City of Arcata. The reason I said that, because as I said earlier, Cal Poly Humboldt contributed funding towards the initial phase of the project. Also, last week, they have shown commitment in writing, saying that we are committed towards the project and will commit $2.5 million towards the construction of the project. So 2.5 million from them and from, something from the city, we will need less money for construction, so we will be asking for those funds for construction moving forward. So as I said, we will do one more public meeting, once the design is at 60% level, we'll do one more public meeting to get more feedback, to refine anything we can, and then we will have a presentation at TSC and at the city council in 2024 December. And if everything goes well, and we get funding for construction, we are hoping to start the construction in 25, 26 year, or year 25, 26, not in 25, 26 years, hopefully not. So that's just a quick update, I was going to show you this, but you all know, already have seen these slides, how roundabouts are better than a typical intersection, so less conflict points, smooth transitions, so I will stop here and I'll take question, public comments.
Does anybody have anything initial to say, or can I, should I go to public comment first?
I do. So could you remind me the total cost?
Yeah, that's a good question, I did not said that. Right now, the construction cost for both the roundabouts is in the range of 17 to 18 million dollars.
Okay, and, I mean, right now, it's currently a nightmare. It feels like anything would be an improvement. I'm just wondering, do we have an alternate plan? I mean, what I'm hearing from community members and also going to like Arcata1.com, that there are some concerns, and then I'm just going to shoot out my quick question. So did I hear, I'm glad to hear that you said in writing recently that they're going to contribute 2.5 million, because being that, that's like, they're going to be bringing in less, you know, possibly in a half a decade, up to 6,000, what, 3,500 to 5,000 more students, so it's going to heavily impact. I was concerned when I was reading about the, where the bike pass, it looks like the bikes are going to either go with traffic, or they can go with pedestrians, which either doesn't feel very safe, not for the pedestrians and not for the bicyclists who are having to move in traffic through that, and in particular, when we get that huge student increase and they're all on their bikes, so those were some concerns. And then, why no traffic? I know we don't want traffic lights, we've never done it, but maybe it's time for us to consider it. That's all I have.
Well, the, like, if you are a follower of Strong Towns, they heavily are not in favor of traffic lights, it's actually more psychological than it is safety, so I, I think we're headed in, I think that we are going the right direction about not putting them in. There are actually communities that are taking out their traffic lights and actually finding less collisions and it to be safer. So I think that it's important to note that, and I feel like the addition of that amazing Class I path is, I don't, I feel like that shouldn't be underestimated, that's a huge safety addition to that, that will keep people safe and out of the, the way of the vehicle. So I do, I think that's a really important thing, and I feel like maybe a lot of the people, and I can be corrected in public comment if I'm wrong, but I feel like a lot of people were unable to tell that that was there from the original drawing, because we did get those three comments, right, of concerns of speed, slip lane, and separating the bicyclists and pedestrians from traffic, but I don't, I think maybe that didn't really come through for everyone on the drawing, and hopefully people are feeling better about that now that it's been pointed out. That's all I have to say.
Councilmember Schaefer, you have anything?
I'm, I'm ready to hear a public comment first, and then we'll, we'll come back.
Fantastic, let's go to public comment.
And I don't drive a car anymore, I walk, I take the bus, I ride my trike. That is a very interesting streetscape we have in our community, and any improvements, future thinking, future thinking, not regular standard what we could do like they've done in the past, and I am in favor of avoiding things like stoplights and, and the such. I know that at the city, state of the city event, it was talked about a land bridge, and I guess that's way off in the future potentially, a land, you know, a big, huge expansive land over the freeway from like 14th to that area was discussed. What I really want us to think about in the future, in a climate-changing world where we have to adapt, that we really consider lessening all kinds of vehicular traffic, whether it's electric vehicles or gas vehicles, that, especially cars and trucks, and so that those places will be safe much more organically because fewer traffic will be had there. But also, in that land bridge concept, I, I do hope that whatever the design is, and I'm going to say this out loud now, so that 20 years from now, people can say, oh, she said that, let's not have any type of vehicular traffic on that land bridge, however it's designed. Leave it to the coyotes and, and the hikers kind of thing, depending on what decides to happen on that thing if it comes to pass. So just kind of thinking about the future, lessening traffic, doing all these safety measures, not going with the standard signals, you know, Strong Towns has a great reputation, so let's just carry on that way, but let's all, let's all drive less, you guys, we can do it.
Thank you.
Hi, Paul Patino. You know, I spent eight years on the Transportation Safety Committee, and during that time, we massaged this intersection to look like that, and we prayed for it to happen. Thank you.
I personally like the idea of roundabouts, they do tend to be better in many ways. I would really love it if there was a way to make way for, you know, with such a large investment in this particular area, unearthing the Jolly Giant Creek, it's been buried there. It's, it's, I don't know exactly where it is, but it's basically under this, this development, and there's so much that, you know, the, the city could benefit if we took the, the Jolly Giant and brought it back to, to the surface of the ground there, that, you know, obviously it would have to go underneath the freeway, but if there was a way that we can have a beautification of the river, it would actually add a lot to our local economy potentially, there's so much potential there, and also it would take a lot of, away from our footprint, our environmental footprint. I mean, at the, the base of the, the Jolly Giant Creek, where it hits the bay, it's, it's like, it's literally clocked as the, the, the most toxic, highest concentration of dioxide in the Humboldt Bay is right there, where the Jolly Giant comes out, and obviously a lot of that is due to the legacy of the timber industry that was here and still is here, but nonetheless, you know, some of it also is certainly related to the fact that the, the river is buried for so far, I mean, I don't even think you can see where the, where the river goes under or comes out, but it's under there. And, and so anyway, I'd like to see if, if at all possible, when we're making such a large investment in, in finding a way to, to bring that, that, that river back to the surface, even, you know, having cafes along the river, or, you know, different, different things, you know, obviously, you know, we're not talking about all of that right now, but if there was a way that this design could, at the very least, provide the, the possibility that it would, could be unearthed at another time, that, I'd really like to see that, so thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Colin Fisk with CRTP. It's no secret that these intersections have been a problem for a long time. If you look on Street Story, you'll see them just covered with reports of hazards and near misses and collisions, and that's no surprise to anyone who's used them, so I think it's a really good thing that the city is trying to, to redesign these intersections. CRTP would really like to be in full support of the project, but there are a few things that we think need to be resolved first. So one is that, in this area, the bike and pedestrian traffic is already too heavy for a shared facility, just a single Class I facility to work properly. You really need separate bike and pedestrian facilities as a sort of side path to the roundabouts. I did learn recently that there's now a plan to separate the bikeway and the sidewalk on the overpass, which is great, but there also need to be separate and clearly marked bike lanes alongside the crosswalks and throughout the project area. Merging with car traffic to navigate a roundabout is extremely stressful for most bicyclists, and we can't expect them either to ride up on the sidewalk and mix freely with pedestrians as the only alternative, due to the high volumes of pedestrians and bicyclists in the area. There's a sort of similar bike ramp sidewalk system currently at the Sunset and Foster roundabout, and essentially, bikes never use it, and presumably, that, this system is keeping less confident riders from, from riding at all in the area. The second thing is that the design really should include more measures to slow traffic approaching the roundabouts and help ensure yielding to pedestrians. This could be traffic calming measures on the approach, like lane narrowing and tighter curves, as well as upgraded signage and signals at the crossings themselves. It sounds like there's a plan for rapid flashing beacons, which is great, but it would be better even to have full hybrid beacons that actually produce a red light, which would help especially with blind and sight impaired pedestrians. And finally, the slip lanes, we just need to get rid of the slip lanes. These are the turn lanes that allow the cars to skip the roundabout without stopping. They remove by doing that, the traffic calming and safety producing effects of the roundabout, and they're notoriously dangerous for pedestrians where the pedestrians have to cross them. The only reason for them, and you heard, is congestion management, and the city has been saying recently that that's not a priority anymore, certainly not compared to safety, so we really just think you should get rid of the slip lanes. So if you can make those changes, the full separated bike and pedestrian facilities, the additional traffic calming measures, and getting rid of the slip lanes, we think this would be a really great project. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would say I'm probably the only one other than the city engineer that participated at Cal Poly and when Caltrans and the city and Cal Poly got together for this. So I saw the presentation there, and I'm supportive of a roundabout. You know, I worked in Valencia, Spain, and they had them all over the city, a lot more complicated than this, there are like three lanes, so you, you need to exit, you've got to get on the outer lane, so this is really simple in comparison. There's one big problem, though, it's, it's called people, you know, and I'd like to point out that on, on my walk over here, there's a Subaru on H Street and 14th, right after 10 feet past the stop sign, it's totaled on the back end, it just parked, and all the glass is there, so somebody, even though there's a stop sign there, had to run the stop sign, and the force that it hit that car and pushed it into two other cars in front of it. So that's my example of something is seriously wrong, and it's, and there's a lot of vehicles that have been hit in the city. I mean, everyone has a story about having a parked car hit in the city. I'd also say about a week ago, Front of Salt, I walked by and a guy was in the driver's seat of his car, and he had a bong, and he was going at it. So it's, there's been a number of studies that have come out in the last month, in New York Times, I think it was December 30th, and why is the US like dramatically having deaths and injuries compared to Europe, compared to Canada, compared to Australia? And they point out in Europe, the reason, you know, even though they're much more complicated, is there, there are manual sticks there, so there's no way someone's holding their cellphone. So number one, the why we're seeing this dramatic change is cell phones, that would be first, and then the second, as they say, is the legalization of cannabis, too. We have a lot more people that are driving, and I witnessed this in front of my own house with the, the police department, a car hit a truck, flipped over upside down in front of my kitchen window, I went out there, the kids crawled out, told me how high they were, and I just, I stayed quiet because they wanted some advice, I said the police were on their way. I watched how the police department interacted with this whole thing, and it was, it was just like a fender bender, nobody's really taking this quite seriously. I've had conversations with our city manager about this, I've asked for statistics on, you know, all this information to try to figure out what, what is going on, but the problem is probably, yes, speed is part of it, but the other two, cannabis and cellphone use, and so if you're not going to go after that, nothing's going to change. I mean, I know that you're saying, well, we're out, we're going to have bicycle lanes, you're not safe in a bicycle lane if people are You're not safe in a bicycle lane if people are acting this way. You're not safe at all. So please, take this seriously.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm Fred Wise. I have corresponded a bit with Netra on this and spoken with him. I want to say first that I'm a big fan of roundabouts, have been for decades. I sent you an email earlier today with images that show the way that bikes would actually go on these roundabouts, and including cars and trucks. This is also on ArcataOne.com. The images of the roundabouts look okay until you look at the details, and then it starts looking bad, in my opinion. The main thing is that there's 10 places where the pedestrian path crosses a traffic lane. We're told there'll be flashing lights there. We've seen on K Street that the flashing lights don't always work well. The, I'm not at all a fan of traffic lights, but one advantage is that the cars are stopped and that pedestrians know when they can go. As Colin Fisk mentioned, the idea that using Class 1 shared paths is a step backwards, and hope to see a redesign that does not have the shared pathways. This is probably one of the busiest pedestrian bicycle places in all of Arcata. They should have separate pathways there. What's not so obvious, which is why I made the diagrams that I sent you, is that if a vehicle is stopped, a vehicle's coming off the roundabout and is stopped for pedestrians or bicyclists to go over the traffic lane, if two or three vehicles are stopped, they'll be, the back of the vehicle will be in the roundabout itself. If a bus is stopped, the back of the bus will be in the roundabout. This stops the traffic in the roundabout. That needs to be improved. I have some suggestions I'll be talking with Netra about. As Colin Fisk also mentioned, the requirement that bicyclists either merge with the traffic or go on the shared pathway is not a good solution. I think that this arrangement is actually less safe for people, for pedestrians, less safe for bicycles, and also, less safe for cars. I mentioned in the CEQA exemption, it says, quote, "The 2,000 new units at Cal Poly dorms", quote, "could contribute to pedestrian bicycle vehicular traffic." Now, it will contribute. I don't like the lack of honesty in that document. It also doesn't mention that there's going to be 5,000 or 6,000 more students and faculty, and they'll be going through this intersection. Thanks, I hope we come to a good solution. We do have time to improve this project according to your schedule. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any online comments?
We do. The first one is a call-in user. Go ahead, call-in user. Go ahead, phone user. There you go.
Council, Mayor. My name's John Emig, and I have two points of curiosity and one point of advocacy. I wonder if staff could go back to the graphics and show where Jolly Giant actually is there? That's an interesting point. And then, my ears really perked up when just kind of glossed over, mentioned in passing something about the Annie Mary Trail being proximate to that. I'd like to see that pointed out. And then the one thing that I want to mention in advocacy is, I think maybe you could reconsider the slip lanes and calm the traffic even further without them. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and then our next speaker is Karina. Go ahead, Karina.
I am, full disclosure, I am a member of the Transportation Safety Committee, but for tonight, I am simply a semi-self-educated citizen. Colin and Fred said a lot of things that I totally support. Is there any physical reason why the path is being restricted to 10 feet wide? Can we make it 20 feet wide and separate pedestrians and bicyclists? I'm a pedestrian and a bicyclist, and at the high volumes, they're going to see, yeah, you need more capacity for both. But otherwise, it looks like a really, really great improvement. And one other thing, how about put a little oomph in those crosswalks and make them raised to act as speed tables? Anyway, thank you for all your work. That's all I got.
Thank you.
All right, no more online public comment.
All right, then I will bring it back to the council.
Well, I would be really boring and say that I always felt like, you know, we felt way back in the 70s when we were scaling down the freeway that there was a problem with Sunset. And so I'm really happy to see, finally, it's being dealt with. You know, maybe not everyone is 100% happy, but I will say, back then, things have changed radically, and we definitely didn't have the development that we have now, or the pedestrians, or the bicyclists. And so I think that anything we can do, I'm impressed with some of the suggestions we've had, and thinking about how some of them can be incorporated and how that could work better. I'm sure I'll go back to the Transportation Committee, and they can sort of work on that. Thank you.
I'll just reiterate that I'd really like to see the bicycles separated from traffic. I think it's going to be, yeah, I'm worried.
So I was wondering, Netra, if we could, I'm sure that you probably did discuss in length the ideas that you're hearing that, you know, have gotten some traction, and, you know, ideally, it does, it does sound great to eliminate the slip lanes. I don't think congestion should be a priority as we move away from cars. That's something that shouldn't be. And also, like the separated bike path, I'm sure that you discussed that. So, you know, would you, could you update us on that process and maybe why you made the choices you did? And is there a possibility to put these in? Or, I don't want to let perfect get in the way of progress on a much-needed project, but also, if we, if we can, make some improvements that we've heard about, that would be great, too. So could you just share with us some of that?
Yes, thank you. So let's probably start with traffic mitigation that was brought up. Definitely, we can make this better and improve it. Yes, there are ways to do it. For example, we discussed this before the meeting with our design team also. For example, yes, slip lane, people may speed because it's a continuous shot, straight shot from here going to a lane. Are there any ways to reduce that? One of the options was making this crosswalk, raised crosswalk, like a speed table that would reduce one. Making this lane to yield to this traffic so they slow down. And I forgot to mention earlier that the approach speed, design approach speed for every single leg of the roundabout is 25 miles per hour or less than that. So they, they are designed in a fashion that they will not be able to go that fast. Once they get in, some people might go definitely 40, yes, but...
Could I just, I'm not sure if it's important, but the online viewers are not able to see that. Is there any way that we could get that on their screen?
Oh, sorry. Okay.
No, I don't know how...
It's then. Sorry, thank you.
Excuse the interruption.
No, no, that's good. I did not notice that. Thank you for that. So, back to slip lane, yes, people may speed there, and we can do some traffic measures to reduce that speed or slow that speed by raised crosswalk. But again, we went to the public meeting, and we have talked to the fire department on this project. They are right now onboard. Speed tables are not, I would say, preferred by the emergency services, so definitely we need to check with them before I say, yes, we can do the raised crosswalk. Yes, definitely, it's possible, and I would recommend it, but definitely, we need to get the buyout from emergency services on that, because having a multiple raised crosswalk on a busy intersection going, connecting Cal Poly and city may not be ideal for them for emergency services. So yes, it's possible, we can do that. Also, for the slip lane, and then adding this lane, as I said earlier, we are in Caltrans right-of-way, and traffic operations impact the highway operations. People queuing on, from here to the highway is not preferred. So that's one of the reasons we have to work with our partners on those conditions as well. So that's another reason. Having a separate bike lane, yes, definitely, it will be ideal to have a separate bike lane, separate walkways, separate for car, yes, that's ideal. Definitely, in an ideal world, if we had a real state. Currently, we do not have a real state or right-of-way to accommodate that. If somebody asks me, yes, why don't you make this 10-foot walkway, 5-foot sidewalk, and other 5-foot for our bicycle? That's possible, but that's already shared path, is the purpose of that. People are sharing that path, bicycles and pedestrians are sharing that path. If we had a right-of-way, definitely, we could have done it. Is there a right-of-way here to do that in this area? Potentially, yes. There is a bike lane, that could be, there's enough right-of-way to add some buffer, but this is, again, Caltrans Bridge, and to make any changes to the bridge, we have to go through the headquarters process. It's a long process, so we did not consider that. Can we, again, ask them? Yes, we could ask them. We talked to a lot of people who ride bicycles, who are avid bicyclists, who are learners. Experienced bicyclists, they prefer to be on the lane, in the lane. They would not, you know, their words, they would not prefer to have a separate bike lane here, because, you know, vehicles are always in the curve motion, and it's not ideal for them to be at the same time. So most of the expert bicyclists, they take the lane and they act like a vehicle, and they go to the roundabout. On other, beyond the roundabouts, we can have a separate bike lane in this area, and we already have a bike lanes in this area. So I hopefully answered some of the questions. If you have specific questions, please ask. There were other questions I could also address regarding Jolly Giant. Yes, Jolly Giant flows, right, the pipe is right here. It goes through this field, so I believe it comes here, under this, and goes to the parking lot in this area here, somewhere here in this area, Jolly Giant Creek. Yes, and our policy is congestion management. Yeah, we would prefer to have a vehicle going slower and have a congestion, have more bike and pet friendly. But again, as I said, this is Caltrans facility, Caltrans operation, we need to work with them for the operations of the highway.
Sarah, you have anything?
Yeah, I was going to ask just one question kind of related to what you were just talking about, Netra. It's kind of hard to tell on the design, and it might not even be, you know, fully on there, but how is that Class 1 trail going to be separated from the driving lanes, or will it be different in different parts? Is it vegetation? Is it a median? What is that going to look like?
That is a very good question. In this one, I will not be able to describe clearly where we have a narrow right-of-way, where my mouse is pointing here right now, here. We don't have a much buffer from the travel lane, but as we come into the roundabout, you will see a small separation here. This is, it's still a concrete, but that's a separation. It's, just for the purpose of measuring it, this parking lane width is 8 feet wide here. So this is around like a 5 feet of buffer here. There's buffer between the travel lane and a shared path here, here, all along here. All along here, there's a buffer, a buffer, a buffer here, buffer here, buffer here, and this is more than 10 feet here. Again, there's a buffer all along here, all along here from the travel lane. We have maximized the buffer for Class 1 trail or Class 1 shared path throughout the project. That was one of the goals, to have maximum buffer from the travel lane. So it is there.
Thank you for pointing that out, because, yeah, I think definitely that, if we are going to, because of space constraints, have to kind of combine those pedestrian and bicycle infrastructures, that we really make sure that they are truly, you know, separated from the vehicle lanes and that they are as protected as possible. And then, just the other point, you know, and kind of put how I'm feeling about that, I would like to see either an alternative design or better, you know, calling for these slip lanes. I understand not wanting, you know, traffic to back up on the highway. That makes a lot of sense, but I'm just thinking in my mind currently, like, if you're going southbound and you get off, you have to stop. There's a stop sign, even if you're turning right. And people are coming pretty fast off of the 101 there, and, you know, to have that lane and that turn just happen right there, you know, right by where people are crossing, right by the skate park, right by where the high school's field is, you know, it could be pretty dangerous. And so with that only being a yield sign and not a stop sign, and so I do, you know, have some concerns and would want to at least see, you know, what alternatives or what other, you know, calming measures we could put into place to really make sure that folks are slowing down as they're coming into that area, especially when you're turning right on Foster there, just again, because of, there's parks, the clinic's going to be open there, there's going to be people walking around, the high school has their facility, skate park, and so, you know, I'm really, I'm thinking about that.
So, Netra, what comes next? This is going to go to the Transportation Safety Committee? It's going to go through another iteration before it comes back to us, and we can look at some of these changes? Is that correct?
There will be room for minor edits. So as presented today in the staff report, if we approve the CEQA adoption as notice of exemption, as presented at the project, if we minimize the impact, I think we are good to move forward. I think, and David, you can speak for that, but if we make a major change, then we may not be able to adopt the CEQA adoption today for, as an NOE. But hearing the comments, looks like most of the comments that I have heard today is making adjustments to the slip lane, traffic calming. I think if we add those features, they are enhancing the project and not a negative impact, so I would want to hear from David, but I think it will not have an impact on that. But again, to respond to your question, Mayor, is, yes, we are refining our 30% design. It will be enhanced, and again, at 60% level, we will have one more public meeting where we can enhance the design and add those features. If we decide to kick the roundabout and put signal, then yes, this CEQA process is over. We have to restart again. But if we are enhancing the project and moving forward, then we should be in good hands.
Perfect, thank you.
But the action that I think he's most looking for tonight is to, you know, direct staff to file the CEQA exemption, to move the CEQA process forward.
Perfect. Do we have a motion, or does anybody have any more conversation?
I just want to thank Paul for his eight years on the Transportation Safety Committee, and, yeah, dreams are coming true. And they take a while. It's not overnight, and that's why I keep saying, you know, we just, things will happen gradually, and yes, Netra.
I just, there was one comment, I wrote a note here on lid and cap. The cap that was proposed was on the news on the Matt River Union. This is just south of that, this project. It ends on the 17th Street, so this project complements that, so it is not replacement of that in any way. So this is a complement to that cap in future.
Okay, so I would like to approve the U.S. 101 and Sunset Avenue interchange project and direct the staff to file a California Environmental Quality Act document declaration as notice of exemption with the Humboldt County Recorder's Office for the project.
All second. All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Stillman and a second from Councilmember White, all in favor.
Aye.
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 All right, fantastic. Thank you so much, Netra, and thank you for all your hard work. How are we feeling? Does anybody need a break, or are you ready to keep going? All right. Okay, we're at oral and written communications. So the city appreciates public input. This time is provided for people to address the council or submit written communications on matters that are not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council are limited to three minutes. If you are in person and wanting to give public comment, please line up at the podium. Please raise your hand if you're on Zoom, or press star nine if you're on the phone and you would like to make public comments. I would like to remind everybody that, you know, your words matter. This is a community. We are not each other's enemies, even though we have strong feelings. Let's not direct them at each other, and remember that we are Arcata, okay? And also, please remember to address the council and not each other. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you for that, and I fully agree this is a time to come together as a community. I'm here to request that each of the... I'm here to request that each of the council members tell us if you will support a ceasefire resolution on Palestine and let us know, let the community know what, what your position is, each of you. And, you know, this is something that a lot of people have put a lot of energy into so far already. The humanitarian situation in Palestine is getting worse every day. Palestinians are starving. It was a concentration camp before this started. And it's, it's as if Israel is shooting fish in a barrel. It's, it's, it's just, you know, like the amount of military hardware surrounding these two, over 2 million people that have been trapped as prisoners. United Nations recognizes as a open air prison. This is a situation that's getting way worse and there's no foreseen exit ramp at this time. Our government, United States government continues to block action in the United Nations from, from happening that could actually provide humanitarian relief or, or create a ceasefire there. That's why our, like, city joining, what is it? It's over 70 cities around the country so far that have passed ceasefire resolutions is so important because our government is not just funding Israel, providing weapons to Israel, rushing weapons to Israel, but also is height covering for them within the United Nations and preventing the international community from stepping in and doing anything. So by, by passing these resolutions, it shows the, the government that it, you know, the federal government, there, there is a lack of support for supporting Israel's campaign of genocide. And, you know, this is, this is getting so bad. It's, you know, it, it looks like it's on track to be put in the same category, you know, of these historic events like the bombing of Hiroshima and Nagasaki or the, even the Holocaust of, of the Jewish folks and the communists by the Nazis. So, you know, we have, there, there was a ceasefire resolution that the City of Council didn't, didn't fully discuss in November. There was one put forward by the Humboldt for Palestine. There's now one put forward by the Bethel, Temple Bethel community, as I understand. And then there's ours. And if you could just please speak to which one.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Sam Newark. Can I submit this petition? Turn that clock off. I'm not talking yet. Please.
Easy. You can set it off.
Well, thank you. There's almost 1,500 signatures from people gathered exclusively in Arcata, supporting a ceasefire resolution that's also included in there. It's not a resolution that we insist on the exact wording for. We do want to collaborate, but it does represent the greatest opinion in Arcata. Those people include people that I collected, many of us collected on Senior Day at the Co-op. So there's seniors, there's many people from the faculty and the students, the HS, HSU. There's many Jewish people on there. There's Israelis on there. There are prominent people that have said, I know so-and-so on the council. So it's not limited to just the representatives that you might infer from the rabbi or the rabbis representing their point of view. Their congregation, I don't mean to disparage the, the religious Jews, but their congregation is 140 members. That's from their website. We have close to 1,500 signatures and we'll have over 1,500 on this petition by the next council meeting. Given the benefit of the doubt, they have 140 members. If those are families, we could double that. We could say they have 280. 280 people representing some of the feelings of the rabbis, not necessarily all, versus 1,500 people from our community supporting this particular resolution. The problem is more deference is being paid to the rabbi's authority seemingly emulating from this council than is being paid to our colleagues and the people that have signed this petition. So the rabbis deserve a state, a place at the table and we warmly encourage them, but they have not consistently contacted us. They have selected individuals and had limited contact and conversation. So if they want to represent the Jewish people on our petition and the other people in the community, they need to become more available and collaborate with us so that we can come up with something that is equitable for everyone. And the, the massacities are undisputed in Israel, but you will find extremist types who might be termed Jewish supremacists that are denying this. I think that's on one end, the extreme, and those need to be.
Thank you for your comments.
Love.
Okay. So, let's see here. It has been said that politics is history in the making. Actually, I said that. I'm trying to make it distinct. Occupation, colonization, and settlement are a part of history. In, okay, I actually received a message here from somebody. I'm gonna share it. So he says there is no settler colonialism because the whole of Samaria Judea was purchased with Jewish national funds prior to 1947. During the war of 1948, Jordan occupied the land. In 1967, the IDF liberated the land, returned it to its rightful owners. So there hasn't been any occupation since June 1967. It's not colonialism because we are indigenous to that land, to the whole of Eretz Israel for that matter. I'm gonna conclude a little bit. There is also no apartheid, no ethnic cleansing. Well, talk about that later. Okay, so that's coming from Hamas. All right. Also, what has been called apartheid refers to needed security measures for protecting the people of Israel from inimical foreigners. Okay, let's see here. Let's see. There's a particular sign I take objection to. I saw this at the pro-Palestinian protest on Friday's super courthouse, says Santa Claus, the Easter Bunny, the Tous Ferry Israel, and yet none of them exist. That is saying that Israel's fictitious construct does not have legitimacy. Claiming Israel's fictitious denies in order three southern 200 years of historical claims by the Hebrews to this land and the current reality of the Jewish state. What is most objectionable is that those asserting the end reality of Israel provide justification for dispensing with its trooping away as a Khmer mirage or fantasy. Okay, now let's consider some of the problematic chants. One well-known one is from the river to the sea, Palestine will be free. Another is when people are occupied, resistance is justified. Not only are such aggressive statements incompatible with their professed interest in promoting peace via ceasefire, but they are claiming brutal terroristic actions as resistance. Okay, now I'm going to share a quote. This is from Zuhair Mossain, a Palestinian leader. The Palestinian people do not exist. The creation of a Palestinian state is only a means for continuing our struggle against the state of Israel for our Arab unity. In reality today, there is no difference between Jordanians, Palestinians, Syrians, and Lebanese. Only for political and tactical reasons do we speak today about the existence of a Palestinian people, since Arab national interests demand that we posit the existence of a distinct Palestinian people to oppose Zionism. Yes, the existence of a separate Palestinian identity exists only for tactical reasons. Jordan, which is a sovereign state, was defined borders, cannot raise claims to Haifa and Jaffa. While as a Palestinian, I can undoubtedly demand Haifa, Jaffa, Bir, Shabbat, and Jerusalem. Yeah, and I do take a position on this. I don't recognize Palestinian identity. I do re-recognize Muslim and Arabian identities, which have a longstanding history in some neighboring territories, but not in this territory. Very well.
Thank you.
Hello, councilmembers. I'm gonna try not yell tonight. Might be a little easier if I am not talking about what is happening to the Palestinians. So I'm gonna take a break from that tonight. Actually, I know more about that than I want to know. I wonder if the city might consider sponsoring or in some way incorporating the BDS movement. You know, if people want change and want Palestinians to be free and for this ugly occupation and constant violence to stop, one way to do that is to boycott Israel. BDS, and, and an easy way I remember it is Big Dog Slobber. BDS stands for Boycott, Divest, and Sanction. Papa John's, Domino's, McDonald's, Burger King, Coke, Pepsi Sprite, BMW, HD Hyundai, HP Caterpillar Tractors, Pfizer, Chevron, Texaco, Google, Amazon, Expedia, Remax, Volvo. These are all companies that we can boycott. And, and this is the way that South Africa can gain their freedom from apartheid. Starbucks, Puma, Siemens, Disney, Intel, SodaStream, Airbnb, Teva. There's a, there was a huge donation made to Israel by somebody from a, a website called Fans Only or OnlyFans. I think it's an adult website, but he was one of the biggest contributors. Let's see. I also wanted to mention that there's a rally at the courthouse on Fridays from four to six, and that's with the group Humboldt for Palestine. I'm with both groups. I'm with Redwood Peace and Justice, and I'm here to support our resolution. We could not have kept it any simpler or less judgmental. We took, we agreed to take some whereas's out of it based on what Rabbi Bob wanted to do. A lot of people have signed signatures to that particular resolution and its wording. But I wanted to also mention some authors and some news sites that if you're interested in finding out more real news about what is, what the, what the conflict is about. There's a book by Miko Pallad, The General's Son. Norman Finkelstein wrote a book called Gaza and Quest Into Its Martyrdom. Nomi Klein, and I'm sorry, I forgot the name of her book right now. Gideon Levy. These are all Jewish people except for one. Gideon Levy is a columnist, columnist journalist for Harat Newspaper in Israel. Rashid Kalivi.
Thank you for your comments.
You bet.
Good evening again. Don't know whether you've gotten into the EIR. It's only 1,990 pages, but I'm gonna zero in on one thing that was important to me that was promised during the scoping period from David was a sound study, which failed to do in this. And I also went to Plan West and got their opinion about a year and a half ago. And basically, they said, we'll do it. It just has to do, we just gotta get the order from the city of Arcata. So somehow, there's a lot of finger pointing and no noise study. And why this is important is because this is the issue that I reached out over two years ago and you all got a letter at that time, you know? And it's pretty obvious from what the police department, my conversations with them, there was zero compliance with the law. I also have a noise meter, so I know what the, what the allowable limit is for your front yard and for your house. And unfortunately, you're way out of compliance. So I am still like deeply disappointed in this council and in this city manager because I've had conversations with her, especially she's retiring. You would think that you would want to do the right thing and reach out and try to do something about this issue. But it's just like, you're acting like, hopefully I just go away on this, but you know, I'm not gonna go away on this. And it is a law. It is something that you should have done two years ago. I don't care, at that time, we didn't have much of a force according, that was the, the reasoning with the police department. They said, please go to you guys and get some more people. And that has been accomplished, but there's still a zero change. In my last conversation with Karen on this was, Karen, I hope you're not gonna tell me that the police have actually done anything. And she said, no, I'm not going to, I'm not going to tell you that that's happening. There's no, nothing's being done in that. And this is kind of also related to, you know, our, our traffic and our safety too from the standpoint, there is not much going on. I mean, she basically said, you know, they, they, they get a DUI on every once in a while, but I don't see much activity in this area too. So, you know, you got a lot of people, a lot of cars are being smashed into. Go check that one out on H and 14th. And I would also say from that standpoint, the insurance adjuster was there the day before. I mean, it's been there a few days. I talked to them with the person that was the car in front of that, and they said, a lot, a lot of the vehicles have been hit in Arcata. We're talking about stationary cars, not, you know, they could have been people. So it's just ridiculous how nothing is being done on this. This was, this brought up in the leadership conference, when we had the chalkboards, and I brought it up, the, the mother that was killed pushing her baby across. So when is anything gonna change?
Thanks, Greg.
Greetings. My name is Joanne McGary, and I'll try and get three things in in three minutes. The first thing I want to remind people, as I mentioned earlier on, I attended the first part of this public education forum on free speech versus hate speech. Access Humboldt was there. The panelists were quite diverse. It was very informative. I wish I could have stayed, but I wanted to be here. It's gonna be on Access Humboldt, so please, I recommend everybody watch it. Secondly, I have been researching the history of proclamations and resolutions in the city of Arcata. I know, Alex, you're in your fourth term here on the dais, and you speak often about the history of what's happened in the past when you were previously on the council. Resolutions and proclamations are historically a part of what happens in the city of Arcata. One of the things I was reminded of when I was researching was a proclamation, actually, it was a resolution that was put before the council to vote on in July of 2023, recognizing the rights of a pod of orca whales. And that, the process of getting that on the ballot, it was quite interesting. There were people here speaking of the importance of Arcata as a city, speaking out in protection and recognizing the rights of a pod of orca whales, which I totally applaud. So I go now to the issue of a resolution that 1,500 people signed a petition in support of to get on the agenda, just to get on the agenda for public discussion, for public discussion, then a vote, and God willing, passage. Because this is as important, as important, the human beings suffering and recognizing their rights to live. So please, 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 the Redwood Center for Peace, the Redwood Peace and Justice Center Coalition created a very simple resolution on New Year's. I would love for you to look at that, decide like the, the city of San Francisco supervisors did, on the language of that, adding, subtracting, open for public discussion, just like what we've been doing on other matters tonight, okay? Put this on the agenda. The community deserves this. And the final thing I wanted to say is tomorrow's my birthday, and I have raised attention to a thing called the Charter for Compassion that Karen Armstrong created out of her TED Talk prize. The Charter for Compassion is an international group. If all of you would do me a favor and give me the gift of going to the Charter for Compassion, looking at the charter and signing it as a gift to me. Thank you very much. Let Gaza live.
Hi, I'm Dan Shaheen. Talking again. Just wanted to let you know, I'm a proud Palestinian-American, 10-year citizen of Arcata. Since I got here, I made two more Palestinians, my daughters. Okay, we're not going anywhere. My, my family migrated to the region in the West Bank in the year 1380, okay? And they have been there to this day. If you want to tell me that's not indigenous enough and that somebody from Brooklyn or Russia or Poland has more right to call themselves indigenous to the region, let's discuss it. I think there are plenty of indigenous Jews in that area that were there at the time of the founding, just as there were indigenous Arabs. They once lived together in peace and prosperity, Christians, Jews, and Muslims, people of the book, the children of Abraham. They lived together in peace. They can do it again. Please, consider sending a message to our government that Palestinian people exist, we're human, we have rights like everybody else, we love our children, we love other people, we're not filled with hate. If you know a Palestinian, you know that. If you know a Palestinian, you know that, okay? And I invite you to know me and know my family, because we're going to be here, and I'm going to come back, and I'm going to respectfully address this council until they consider putting a resolution on the agenda and discussing it and letting the people know how they really feel. That's all I really want. Even if you don't pass it, I want to hear it discussed, because silence is the problem. Silence is what leads to fear, which is what leads to hate, which is what leads to suffering. Those are words from a famous Jewish screenwriter named Lawrence Kasdan. They were true then, they're true now. It's silence on this issue. It's the fear of speaking out about what is wrong in the world and in this community that leads to suffering for so many. And it's always the poorest and those with the least capacity to speak for themselves that suffer. So please, just think about it, really think about it. Look at the resolutions available, look at who they're coming from. Consider the fact that 1,500 citizens of Arcata are in support of a ceasefire in one way or another. Like me, they're flexible in their ideals in that, the exact quibbling of the language in the, in the resolution is less important to me than the message this community sends that we're in favor of peace and justice and against racism. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Good evening. I'm Fred Wise. The, for those of you who haven't seen the 3D images of the potential buildout of the Gateway Area, I encourage you to do so, people listening at home. It's on ArcataOne.com. These images are something that we've waited for, for over two years. What we've got are less than what we paid for, but they're a lot better than nothing. There's also images from the draft environmental impact report there. They give a much more clear idea as to what may happen in Arcata. In terms of the linear park, the council approved this in August of last year. The gateway code, the form-based code, has had no change to support the linear park. It is still possible to build a five, six, or seven-story right up to the edge of the linear park. This is something that needs to be changed. I am working with Martha Jane to develop some, the architect locally, develop some ideas for people to look at. The next item I'm going to talk about is something that you'll be hearing from me over the next few months. It has to do with ministerial review. Currently, the gateway code is set up so that a building that's 47 feet tall can be approved by one person, the zoning administrator. There's reasons why the process of ministerial review got to this point, and certainly the problems that we had, that Arcata saw with the Village project years ago was part of it, and to make it easier for developers to get their projects approved. What happened with Village cannot happen again because of state laws, and the Community Development Director can explain that. It cannot happen at all. I've talked to other cities. Ministerial review includes planning commission review. I've said this before, I'll say it again, the, when a project is good, it gets approved quickly. The Julian Berg Valley East Loss took 31 minutes. The Kyle Barton Project on 11th Street had a lot of discussion and community involvement. It was under two hours. The, I'm going to propose that all projects go through the planning commission for five years. The mayor has referred to this as a living document. This is how we change it, by looking at things. The reason is very simple. The more people who look at the projects, the better off we are. And there's no downside to it. As I said, a good project goes through quickly, and a bad project would get rejected in any case. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Fred. Last call for in-person public comment.
Paul Patino, since I stayed to listen to everybody and, you know, I didn't get bored and leave, I went and had dinner. I just tried to remind you, real simple, ceasefire, that's it. Very simple. Doesn't have to be any deeper than that. No judgment, you know, pretend you're working out at the gym, and it's like, no judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to online.
First public commenter is Shannon. Go ahead, Shannon.
Oh, go ahead, Shannon.
Hi there. I just wanted to speak in favor of putting a ceasefire agenda, a resolution on the agenda. You know, I know you talked about this. I know, Meredith, you emailed me back that you guys had three hours of public comment on this back in November. I unfortunately wasn't a part of that. At that time, I was still frozen in time about October 7th and everything that had occurred. It took me about six weeks or eight weeks to really kind of like react to what is going on globally. And I really didn't want to, like, say the wrong thing or step on anyone's toes. So unfortunately, I didn't get to participate in that public comment, and I think there are some people like me that were kind of like frozen. And so I do think it is important to consider bringing this back for public comment, considering we've had like over four months of just incredible bombing and slaughter of children and babies. And I think it's important to now look at this and really look at it for what it is. And it's just devastating, and I think that it's in the best interest of everyone in the whole wide world to ceasefire, 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 ceasefire. It's really in the best interest of Israel, the best interest of Palestine, it's the best interest of America, it's the best interest of Europe, it's in the best interest of the global south, it's the best interest of every single person in this world to ceasefire right now in Gaza and Israel. It's only inflaming the region, it's making everything really tense, it's increasing antisemitism, it's increasing anti-Islam, anti-Muslim, anti-Arab, it's increasing everything. So I'm doing everything I can to speak out against this. Obviously, I am very pro-Palestinian. I really relate to these people. I have Irish heritage. I really understand, deep in my ancestral trauma, what it feels like to be colonized. And so I relate, and I've gotten to meet Palestinian people from the West Bank that live here, and they're scared to come to this meeting. They are scared to go out in public. The woman wears a hijab, and she is scared to be seen in public right now because of what the remarks or the treatment she would get. And these are the most beautiful, sweetest, nicest people in the world. And so I know Arcata is a really good place. I really have a lot of value and faith in Arcata and the city and the values. I mean, this is where I learned about Palestine years ago when I went to Humboldt State. That's why I'm here. That's why I decided to raise my family here. And so I really have a lot of faith in our community coming together and putting forth this resolution at this point in time. It's really a unique point in time. It's a watershed moment in history. This is like Vietnam, this is bigger than Vietnam. This is like, okay, let's speak out against this. Because I try to talk to my representatives, and you know what? They're all bought and paid for. They're all bought and paid for by this government in Israel that is insane. That is absolutely insane. And there are a lot of good people in Israel, and they're trying to speak out.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
All right, our last public commenter is Sandra. Go ahead.
Hi, this is my first time here. My name is Sandra Martokia, and I am speaking up today to respectfully urge you to add a ceasefire resolution for Gaza to the agenda. Cities are doing this all over the country. I saw that Durham, North Carolina, just passed a ceasefire resolution yesterday, St. Petersburg, Florida, last week, and many others have voted on ceasefire resolutions. Our administration will see this. And the US, as we all know now, does have some power and the ability to stop this devastating loss of human life. There are countries all over the world who are standing up to this. Just today, the UK says they are considering suspending arms exports to Israel if it invades Rafa. The United Nations has warned against an Israeli ground invasion of Rafa, saying, and I quote, "It could lead to a slaughter." The situation in Gaza is only worsening, and it is dire. I think it's essential to recognize that the people of Arcata deserve to have our country hear our voice. Thank you.
Is there any more public comment?
It looks like we have one more. Rye Frye, go ahead. So close. Rye Frye, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. My bad. Yeah, I just wanted to support your guys' hopefully adoption of a resolution or ceasefire. This is Ryan Muppin. Thank you.
Is there anybody else online?
Nope, that's the last public comment.
Okay. Thank you all for your comments. I'm going to address this really quickly. I know that we did have a resolution on our agenda on November 15th. As one commenter stated, we did hear several hours of public comment. That resolution did not pass. You know, since November 15th, the situation has continued to develop, and my job as mayor is to be a community builder and a consensus builder. And because this item is not on the agenda, you know, we can't discuss it tonight. I can't tell you how I feel about it. I can't expect my council members to either. I mean, this is something that has been deeply embedded with me. I'm a Jewish woman. This is how I have grown up. But I cannot expect the same depth of knowledge from my council members. However, as a consensus builder, I would like to just take a read of our council right now. It's going to take three people to support adding this back to the agenda. So if I have, I, you know, full disclosure, I have been having conversations, some really productive conversations. I will say that I have a lot of people reaching out that are very scared about this, you know? Listen, you know, my son's bar mitzvah was in July last year, and it was at Moonstone. And I had a big sign that said, Happy Bar Mitzvah, Jacob. And this was in July, this was before any of this. And I was terrified to have that sign out because I didn't want any antisemitic things to happen during a very joyful moment. So you cannot tell me what is antisemitic unless you've lived in my life. So that being that, I appreciate that we have signatures. I appreciate the conversations that we've been having. I don't appreciate being told that I don't have a moral conscience, but I am going to put it out there to my fellow councilwomen, if I have anybody else that is willing to maybe try again, because the division that I'm seeing in this community is awful. You know, I'm afraid to go to the farmer's market. I've been to the farmer's market since November. So if there's anybody else that is interested, then we'll go ahead, but I need to have consensus. So, I mean, we can't discuss it, but you know, that show of hands would be fine too.
Yes, we, I mean, we did, we did all, those of us that were at the meeting, you know, were able to express our thoughts at that time on it. And I was one of the people that did bring that forward as an agenda item, as a collaboration between communities. And there was, there was a lot of attachment to wording in it, not on my end, but from the parties that put it together, and that fell off. I feel like things have changed, and there's become more of a general, at least what we're hearing in the meetings, sense of, let's put something forward asking for peace and less of an attachment to the specific wording. When we did agenda setting, there were, there were some emails that we looked at that had come in regarding a call for peace. It was not specifically a ceasefire or kind of going into details, but more of a call for peace. And I absolutely do support bringing something of that nature here. It seems like that would maybe not make everyone happy in the specific ways that they would like to, but it would show, it would be a chance for everyone in the community to come together. And I agree with what former council member and mayor Paul Patino said, to keep it simple. And I feel like that's really what I'm starting to hear more of, and I'm happy to support that. And although we can't control what will happen in the chambers on that day, and people's, you know, if people do have attachments to wording and such, that's where things tend to go off the rails. But at the end of the day, it is a resolution coming from the five of us, so we are the ones that have to be comfortable with what it says. And if it's a call for peace in general, I don't know that any of us would disagree with that or anyone in the community. So I do, I would, I would speak up in support of that if there are any other council members that would like to join me in that.
Sarah has her hand up.
I was here for November, and there's, and so.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, I'm just going to add, like I've said at our previous meetings, I do support this, and I support it being on the agenda. I've seen a couple different iterations currently floating around that folks have been working on, like Stacy was talking about, one that's more generalized, just talking about peace and, you know, humanity and being able to bring aid to people that are suffering. And I think that is, you know, the minimum that we should and can do, and I do support that. And I've also seen a couple other different resolutions floating around too. And so, you know, I think we would have to pick which, which one of those are coming forward or bring some different iterations to that meeting so folks can have a chance to look at them in the agenda and go over them. But I do think, you know, it's important and essential to recognize, and like Meredith said, not deny anybody's experience. I fully believe and support and understand, you know, that the struggle that people are going through in this community, all forms of hate speech is on the rise across our country right now. I mean, antisemitism, anti-Islamophobia, and just generalized hate speech, you know? And so I think any, any resolution that we need to, that we bring forward also needs to, you know, address the fact and remind people that Arcata has no room for hate like that of any kind. And yes, we reaffirm this, you know, every time that something happens in our community because things still keep happening, and we are still surrounded by people that think that hate is the way for them to get their message across. But I think that we could have a resolution on our agenda that not only supports humanity and peace in the Middle East, but also should work to bring comfort and support to our communities, you know, here at home, and to just, you know, remind folks that there is no room for hate of any kind like that. There is no room for antisemitism in Arcata. We've done this before when, as those pamphlets that were alluded to before, you know, were going around, that there is no room for antisemitism at that level. And that propagandized, you know, antisemitism, that is just, there's no room for it in Arcata. And so I support seeing a resolution on our agenda again, and I support, you know, it including the important piece that, you know, we need to stand up against all forms of hate in this community.
So the first time it came through, there were several iterations, and it was really confusing, not just to myself, but I think also to the public, at which one we were speaking to. A lot of time and things have escalated. And as Stacy pointed out, you know, while Paul's message was simple, it resonates with me. And I would consider putting it on the agenda so that we can talk about the language, bring the community together, and, you know, the call for peace. I think that's something that no one can argue with.
Well, I wouldn't, I would want to put something on the agenda that we, that we wouldn't have the public rewriting for us. You know, my thought would be is I would like to have Stacy and Sarah work on something to bring to the council. That would be my thought. And that, then if we have public testimony, et cetera, which we will, that we are not going to be rewriting it as we get public testimony.
I'm going to be included in putting anything on the agenda.
I was going to say the same. I mean.
Excluded or included?
Well, I mean, yeah. Or a full council.
But again, I don't want to, I just need to know that I have, that there's support. We don't have to go any further than that.
No, I think that there is support, and I saw some of the, I saw some of the examples that the mayor was looking at, and I think that we would all be able to support them. And so it's, it is the mayor's agenda to set forth, and so I would like. And so it's, it is the mayor's agenda to set forth, and so I would like to make sure it's, I feel like I have trust and confidence in my mayor to put that on there, and then as a council, you know, we can hear the public comment, we can talk about that one so that it's not confusing. And if it's like the ones I saw, I don't think it's going to be an issue for anyone in our community. I think it'll be lovely.
Well, I would agree, I just don't agree rewriting it while we sit here. So that's my concern.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Let's do some council and staff reports.
I don't think we have any urgent updates for the night, so let's go around the council.
Yeah, Sarah, do you want to start with the staff report?
Sure. I just have one thing to report on, because our CEA meeting happens tomorrow, which I hope I will be able to attend it, but I'll probably not be chairing it via Zoom. But our CEA is having a workshop, and it is actually going to be here in Arcata, East Street Neighborhood Center. It's going to be on Saturday, March 9th, from 8:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and it's going to be all about heat pumps and water heaters and different, you know, technologies and upgrades and experts, and local, you know, installers and developers kind of talking about how to use heat pumps in your home and how to reduce your carbon footprint that way. So it should be an interesting workshop. Again, that's going to be Saturday, March 9th at 8:30 a.m.
Thanks, Sarah. Stacy?
Mine is short. I attended the HCOG meeting last week, and we approved the 2024-25 overall work program and budget, so that is basically everything that will be happening and the budget that goes with it for this next fiscal year.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, so I attended the HTA, so Humboldt Transit Authority, and one of the things that we've been dealing with, and I'm on a subcommittee for it, and that is for the Earth Center, and trying to figure out what we're going to be doing with the Earth Center. I'm sorry, I just think you don't want me to talk about the Earth Center. The Earth Center is a building that, in Eureka, that the HTA has gotten a significant amount of money to be able to have on the ground floor. The services they provide, you know, transit, they can move their offices there, HCOG may move there, but it would be residential on the top floors. Originally, Cal Poly was going to be involved in that, they thought possibly College of the Redwoods, when Cal Poly wasn't able to do it. And so they're going to be working with a developer in order to provide low-income housing. And it started out for students, and it still will probably be for students. So I just, one of the things I keep thinking about is, I can't get over it, all the cars that have one light out. And I bring this up, and I just think, and maybe it's because I rode with a policeman a long time ago, and he said, "When cars have one light out, taillight or headlight, it's something that they can pull people over." So, you know, we heard a conversation about people smoking, bongs and so forth. Maybe it's an opportunity for us to see what's going on. But sometimes you're going down the road, and you'd say, "Oh, that's a motorcycle." Actually, it's a car with a light, one light out. It's actually quite dangerous. And maybe it's my eyesight, maybe everyone else is fine with it, I don't know. But I would say I would really like to see that happen, that we sort of think about it. The other thing is that, is when you come off a sunset onto H Street, and as you come off, you know, you have, you have your traffic, and it comes, it curves around, so it's not, you know, it's not straight, not straight sidewalks. But it's really worn in that area as far as the striping on the street. And it's really fine up further because we put a bicycle lane in there, and we fixed that, and so now it's really clear and everything looks good. But until you get there, it's very difficult to see it. Maybe it's only at night, but I was coming back from my meeting at the airport last night, and I just, this happens, this is how it is, and I would like to just bring that to your attention. So I'm looking forward to Saturday night. I've been thinking about what my costume's going to be like to be on a cruise ship, which isn't really a cruise ship, but it's going to be the Chamber's event, and it sounds like a lot of fun. And I keep thinking, hmm, maybe I need a hat like the band, like a captain. But I would hope that people consider coming and enjoy it, and those that are already signed up, it's going to be a lot of fun. So I thank the Chamber for doing that, and as the city council, we will be recognizing a business in Arcata for being an outstanding business, which happens every year at the Chamber. So that'll be exciting. I hope they'll be excited, too. Thank you. So I had an opportunity to attend the boat launch ribbon cutting with our lovely mayor who presided over the event. I also had an opportunity to attend our homeless housing working group, again, with our mayor. Some things are happening, let's see, the extreme weather shelter wasn't needed all that much this month because the weather has been fairly temperate. They did use it quite a bit in January. And they have been operating the Day Center intermittently, and what they're finding is that the Day Center is being utilized more than the extreme weather shelter. Also, the safe program, a safe parking program, moving right along, they have between 20 and 30 vehicles there, and Arcade House Partnership's going to be applying for an encampment grant. Friday, I'm going to be attending an advanced CEQA conference, and also tomorrow will be my very first, attending my first Redwood Region Economic Development Loan Committee meeting as the newest board member. And I'm also looking forward to Saturday night's theme of the cruise ship, and I might go as a pirate. Thank you. That's all I got.
All right. Hey, Ria, you did a great job tonight. Thank you so much for being our tech extraordinaire, and this meeting is adjourned.